Out here in a few minutes and use the snow.
Yeah, thank God for snow blowers today with this wet snow. It's like, geez.
It is, it is wet, so.
It's heavy.
No, we had, we had a whole, just a whole, which we have a herd of deer that kind of, this is their, their little grazing area, but we had the whole herd of deer coming through here this morning, so it was really pretty, so I, I videotaped them and put it on Facebook so that that's what you were talking about.
Oh, okay. Yeah, maybe. You know, I saw snow, but I didn't watch the video, you know, so, so it was snow. Action picture and all.
Yeah.
Yeah, we used to have Lindsay's, uh, have Alina here, but I haven't seen him lately. They must be over at Lindsay's house again.
He's checking out Lindsay's house. Got better eats over there than I can.
Yeah, she kept sending them over here. We sent them back. Yeah. Let's see, that's what I was just doing. I stand about two hours, so.
It's just amazing. This is just amazing. This wasn't, this wasn't supposed to happen today. You know, the big storm's coming in tomorrow.
Oh, is it? Okay. I'm losing track of which one's which.
Yeah.
Five, ten, whatever.
Yeah, Wednesday and Thursday, but poor Oak Creek, I'll tell you, they're, they're, this, you know, we're at least, it's good that it's snow. It'll melt more slowly.
Yep.
But Oak Creek, because they're just a little lower than us, they're, they're getting it as, as raining. It's, it's filling up Oak Creek and flooding out the areas, so.
Yeah, I was looking at some of the videos. It's roaring right now.
It's truly roaring. Have you been out to Lake Mary? I wanted to get to Lake Mary today. I'm not going to drive in this, but,
Yeah.
Uh, because I hear that's just gorgeous and it's some of lower Lake Mary's filling up and I haven't seen that since I was a student at NAU.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I remember an overflow a couple of times.
Yeah.
But I had to repair it all, but the road, not so much the dam.
Yes.
But, uh, yeah, no, I, uh, that was the chat at family dinner last night. They were teasing as though, is this that Lake Ow? No, it's Lake Mary. Look at all that water.
It's, you gotta love it. That's where a lot of our water source comes from, so it's nice to see it full.
Oh, gosh. Sure is. I'm gonna have to run off and find a, uh, pen. Where are Stevie Po? Hey, Steve. And Sue. Yay. All right. Well, let me, I'll be back in a minute. I gotta go.
He's still celebrating St. Patty's Day.
Oh, yeah, I have my green on, that's right. I was a little decked out, I'll tell you. County supervisors, they were a bunch of duds, you know? They had their suits on, you know, it's like, come on.
I, I had my green top hat on, but you couldn't see it. I was on video, so I mean, on, on.
Oh, I saw your photo, though. Your, your annual photo. That was good.
Yeah. Ziggy got a leprechaun-sized hat, so it was good.
Good stuff.
I did not even get to partake in some delicious corned beef and cabbage. I'm kind of disappointed.
Oh, yeah.
Lot of that going around on Friday, that's for sure.
Yeah.
I did.
And the green fountain at the White House was kind of cool to see.
That was very cool, Steve. That was really great photo. I loved it.
Yeah, and then the president passed by. He told me to tell you hi, Matt. This might have been, yeah. He stopped there. The motorcade stopped and then he said, hey, you know, let Matt know that I.
Where's Ryan?
Irishman, Irishman, you know, Tom, I said, oh.
There's, there's Horseman in there, too. She's got, got a bunch of it.
Kavanaugh, I, you know, I, I have, everything has got Irish last name except the one that I ended up with, Horseman, but my, 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 my father's mother was Kavanaugh, so.
Oh, really? Oh, how about that? Yeah. Yeah, we got McNally and Sweeney and.
Yeah.
On and on, you know.
We have Fitzpatrick, Kelly, and Kavanaugh. And then Horseman.
Yeah, that's good. We are flirting, yeah, uh, hill. I hear she's Irish. Let's see.
Yeah. Santa Maria tells me she's Irish, but I didn't see her wearing the green, so I don't think so. I understand that Lena's not going to join us today, is that correct?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
Hopefully the other supervisors, uh, we know Matt's here, but other, we hope the other supervisors will join us today.
They are just, um, putting Supervisor Bagay on.
Is she, is she in the office, I hope?
She is in the office.
Good. Perfect. Well, hopefully she'll stay here tonight. We don't want her driving back.
Yeah, I think that is her plan.
Yeah.
Here's Vice Chair.
And I see Jack Jackson Jr. has joined us, so Jack, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
You, Vice Chair.
Good afternoon, everyone.
So we just got an emergency notice here from the residents near Oak Creek are inset due to potential flooding, so. No, that's getting out on our site as well.
Chair Horseman, this is Lindsay.
Yes, Lindsay.
Just want to give you a heads up that, um, Jaylene is not able to be here to read the proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. But Betty Goodwin, the Secretary for the Exchange Club, is here to read that proclamation.
Very good. Well, it is one o'clock and it looks like we do have our four supervisors that are going to be on today on, and County Manager, do we have the county staff to, uh, we need to proceed?
Yes, Madam Chair. All staff is present and the county board are ready to go.
All right, thank you so much. And, uh, members of the board and also members of our public, uh, today is a special session of the Coconino County Board of Supervisors, uh, Tuesday, March 21st, 2023. Before we get started, call to order, I would just like to note and to congratulate Sheriff Jim Driscoll for his recognition as the Western State Sheriff of the Year, certainly well-deserved and wonderful acknowledgement for a over forty-year public servant here in Coconino County. So getting started, we do have our call to order, and my name is Patrice Horseman, and I am the Chair of the Board of Supervisors and the Supervisor for District One. District Two.
Good afternoon, everyone. Herona Mavazquez, Supervisor, District Two, and current Vice Chair.
District Three.
Good afternoon, everybody. Matt Ryan, District Three Supervisor, and and happy to be here. Thank you.
Uh, District Four.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. I'm glad that we're here, safe and sound, and uh, we should, we will be able to have our meeting, and it's gonna be a good meeting, and then I'm the Supervisor for District Four, Coconino County.
Thank you, Supervisor Bagay, and I understand that Supervisor for District Five, Supervisor Fowler is not going to be able to make the meeting today, so we have four out of the five supervisors with that. We have a quorum, and, uh, we will proceed with our meeting. Our next order of business is to honor our nation, uh, through the Pledge of Allegiance. Those that can, please stand, and our clerk will put on the flag and put on the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right. Members of the board and community, uh, now is the time for our call to the public. And this is a time for us to hear, the board to hear from you members of the public. Uh, if you have items, uh, or comments or questions that you have for items that are not on the agenda, now would be your time to address the Board of Supervisors. And, uh, we ask that you keep your, your comments to three minutes, and of course, this is a public meeting, so we ask that you remain courteous and civil. Uh, with that, I'm going to turn it over to our clerk to explain to members of the public on how you can join us and address the board here this, this afternoon. So Lindsay.
Thank you, Chair Horseman. At this time, if there's anyone that would like to make a comment, you can hit the raise hand icon that looks like a hand if you hover towards the bottom of your screen. If you click on that icon, that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak. If you've joined the meeting by telephone, you can hit star nine, and that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak.
Thank you, Lindsay. So members of the public, now it's your time.
And there are no hands raised?
All right, well, this is a final call, uh, for, uh, the call to the public. Members of the public, please feel free to join us.
And there are no hands raised, Chair Horseman.
Thank you, Lindsay. With that, uh, we're going to go forward on our agenda. We have, uh, two very, very important recognitions, and, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Sue, did you have something first?
Madam Chair, we're just wondering if we could take the extra step of asking, uh, members of the public if they are a member of the family of former President Peterson Zaw or of the family of Senator Jack Jackson Senior, if they would raise their hand and we can make them a panelist. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sue and I, I do see, uh, Jack Jackson Jr. is with us, and hopefully, um, it looks like Eileen Zaw is with us. And there may be others who, who may be joining us here in just a minute. Um, so we do have, uh, we do have two proclamations, uh, uh, that I, we are going to be reading here in just a minute. Uh, and we need and are so pleased that we here in Coconino County get to recognize two great leaders, uh, leaders for both the state of Arizona and for the Navajo Nation. Uh, the, uh, uh, one, uh, first one is former State Senator Jack Jackson Senior, who sued in the state legislature, and also the Navajo Nation Tribal Council, and we will hear, um, more, uh, during the proclamation and from his family. And also, uh, former Navajo Nation President, and, um, I'm sorry, um, uh, former Navajo Nation President Peterson Zaw, who was both the tribal chair and the president of the Navajo Nation and founder of the DNA Legal Services, which is when I got to know, um, Peterson Zaw. Uh, obviously, both of these leaders have enriched the lives of the Navajo people and all of us here in Arizona and across the country through their leadership and advocacy, and we are so pleased to be able to recognize both of them through, uh, individual, uh, proclamations that will be read. And we need to and want to express our deepest condolences and sympathy to members of the family uh, who are here, uh, some of them joining us here, um, uh, the, this afternoon. Uh, and we may have lost, uh, Jack Jackson, um, Junior. Who's that?
No, Madam Chair, he is still.
There he is. Oh, there you are. You just, you, you popped out, now you're back, so good to see you. So with that, uh, I am going to ask for the proclamations to be read, and what I'm going to do, uh, members of the board, is the reading the proclamation. I will accept a motion and a second. We'll vote on it, and then we'll take comments from the board and then open it up to family members for comments, uh, for, uh, both, uh, Peterson Zaw and also for, um, um, Dr. Jack Jackson Senior. So, um, first, number one, is consideration of possible action to approve Resolution 2023-11, offering condolences to the family and friends of Peterson Zaw in recognition of his contribution to the community and to approve a proclamation designating March 21st, 2023 as Peterson Zaw Day here in Coconino County. And with that, I would like to turn this over to Public Works Administrative Specialist Jenny Buckinghorse to read the proclamation to us. Jenny, thank you for joining us this afternoon.
Hello. Can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Jenny.
Um, I'll go ahead and start. I want to say, uh, thank you. Um, I want to introduce myself real briefly. My name is Jenny Buckinghorse. I'm from Loop. I also put up, um, Honorable Peterson Zaw's picture in my background, so folks that don't remember or don't know who he is, they'll know who he is. I will go ahead and start reading the proclamation, proclamation that, that designating March 21st, 2023 Honorable Peterson Zaw Day in Coconino County. Where areas, Coconino County observes the Honorable Peterson Zaw Remembrance Day as he was a leader of the largest American Indian tribe, Navajo and Dine in the United States of America, who expanded into three states, Arizona, New Mexico, and Utah. As the last Navajo Nation Chairman, 1983 to 1987, and the first Navajo Nation President, 1991 to 1995. Anywhere areas, Coconino County recognized the Honorable Peterson Zaw's accomplishment for establishing the Navajo Nation's trust fund and securing the future of Dine people, increasing Native American retention rates at Arizona State University, ASU, from forty-three percent to seventy-eight percent. His attention to helping and defending the interests of American Indian people as well as his respect for the multitude of leaders across the world, anywhere areas. Coconino County honors Peterson Zaw's leadership as courageous, inspirational, exception, exceptional, intense, impactful, and as such was an exemplary example of living a life of worthless by staying connected to his Dine cultural and traditional ways of life. Anywhere areas, Coconino County embraces the Honorable Peterson Zaw's representation of strengthening the relationship between the county and the sovereign Native American tribes in Arizona, and more specifically to the sixth tribe calling Coconino County home. Anywhere areas, Coconino County is dedicated to preserving and promoting the honorable Peterson Zaw's legacy by encouraging the deep importance of understanding the significance of indigenous kinship when working with tribal nations, as these are vibrant traditions, cultures, values, and a way of life that is passed from generation to generation in indigenous communities. Anywhere areas, Coconino County Board of Supervisors recommits the core value of our organization, which includes diversity, equality, inclusion, and social justice among Native American communities. Forward. Now, therefore, it be resolved that in the spirit of celebrating and honoring the positive contribution of Honorable Peterson Zaw, a key leader in the Native American government and education to our country, our nation, and our society, we do hereby recognize March 21st, 2023 as Honorable Peterson Zaw Day and encourage all residents to join us in acknowledging and celebrating the life and significant con, significant contributions of the late Honorable Peterson Zaw Day of this great land, reflecting on and embracing the diversity that strengthens in us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jenny, for reading that important proclamation. And as I indicated, members of the board, I will take motion in a second, and then after we've, um, uh, voted on that, I'll get comments from members of the board and then open it up to, uh, family members of, uh, Peterson Zaw. So with that, I would entertain a motion for the proclamation designated in March 21st, 2023 as Honorable Peterson Zaw Day here in Coconino County. Do I have a motion? Supervisor Bagay.
I'm so moved.
We have a motion by Supervisor Bagay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair, Herona Mavazquez. All those in favor of declaring March 21st, 2023 as Peterson Zaw Day here in Coconino County, please signify by saying aye.
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 It is unanimous. And with that, members of the board, I would like to open it up to members of the board for comments uh, on, on, uh, the proclamation and also on, uh, Peterson Zaw. So any comments from members of the board? Uh, Vice Chair Vasquez, Supervisor, Supervisor Bagay, please. Um, you made the motion, so why don't you start?
Okay. Um, thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity to speak to my, um, my uncle, I always called him in Navajo, like due to our, our clans and stuff like that, and Shiyage also, uh, meaning my son, so, um, Mr. Zaw, eh, eh, yeah, Shiyage, so that's how, what kind of relationship I had, and he always considered kinship, and that's a way of, of, that his, his teachings and anywhere, everywhere, he talked about, uh, kinship is the most important, you know, uh, thing within the, within the nation and, uh, the tribal nation. Were there, you can do anything, talk about anything, and, you know, ensure that things are getting done and that, you know, people are more helpful. So I've known him to be in, in that way, and then also, um, the trust fund that he set up for the Navajo Nation within the Navajo Nation. He foresaw that there would mostly be a lot of needs in the future and that, you know, he really stressed the, the importance, how the students had, uh, are, are, should be going to school over and beyond high school, and that, you know, he, he really dealt with, uh, the, the colleges, you know, to, to get more people, more students into college, and so he, he, he left a, a legacy for us, and he, uh, always talked about equity and uh, treating people right, respect, and then we, he also worked on the land issues and, uh, ceremonial, traditional sides of, you know, aspects of the culture and the traditions that we've done, so, uh, that, that's, that's what he was really about, and that, you know, he helped a lot of people on the reservation, and, um, he was never, uh, he was easy to talk to and that he was readily available, you know, and, um, so I just want to say to the, uh, to family, I shouldn't, you know, hold it, eh, yeah. I, I, I beg, eh, gee, it, ah, she, ah, she, so, she, ah, do, eh, he, da, ill, ah, do, ah, she, ah, ah, he, eh, na, eh, gee, she, I, I worked with him, you know, in a lot of aspects of, you know, um, um, roads and, you know, housing and um, health stuff and then infrastructure things. So that's how I know him, that he was an all-around person and we will miss him. And I just wanted to say young condolences from our, our families, immediate families, and then also from the county and I'm pretty sure that's how all departments and people on the whole reservation is, um, is, um, pretty much grieving, you know, uh, what, what has happened. And so I just wanted to say to Rosalyn I just want to thank you so much, you know, for you and your, your, for your kids and in, in, in areas of, you know, being there beside him all these years, you know, to help the Navajo people. And um, as you know, as everybody knows, you know, we, we're the largest tribe and, you know, it's a big undertaking. Sleepless nights here and there and just traveling the whole nation. So he's did it and he's done that. And he was a dreamer, you know, he had a lot of ideas that he wanted to do and, you know, carry forth and he wasn't um, and, and he just, you know, really, um, in all aspects, you know, he, he helped everybody. You know, within, um, the Navajo Nation, so uh, mainly the, the elderly, the veterans, and then also the students that he told to go and go to school and things like that. So um, I had thought in each, uh, scene, you know, so thank you for giving me this opportunity and uh, we all love you and, um, as a family because of what, you know, he's done for, for our families and our communities. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Supervisor Baguette. Uh, Vice Chair Vasquez.
Yes, thank you. That's a hard act to follow right there, but I, I just wanted to say uh, send my condolences to your family and, and say thank you to, um, uh, President's offer, all his hard work over the years and his public service. And it's evident through the work that he has done that he's being recognized. And so I just want to say thank you and, uh, you know, I, I was too young to actually work with him or, or have the effects of his work, but his name was legendary to me and I knew who he was as a young man growing up and I really respected his work and appreciate everything that he's done. And so thank you to, to him and also to your family for all that you've done. Not just for the Navajo Nation, but for all folks in Coconino County and the state of Arizona. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Supervisor Ryan.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. And, and first and foremost, uh, um, my utmost respect to, uh, family. Uh, in, in each case here, we're looking, uh, at, at great leaders that established a legacy. That last, you know, has been lasting, uh, since they impacted our communities, uh, throughout, uh, Northern Arizona and beyond. And, uh, uh, I think Judy did well to speak to a lot of, uh, the, the special contributions that, uh, President, uh, presented or uh, was involved in the education and the culture vision, uh, very, uh, very, very important. Um, uh, he had concluded his career about two years before I, I was stepping into my career. But he came over now and again and, and visited and, uh, and we have great respect. And, um, our hearts, uh, are there for the family. And, and thank you, uh, for sharing, uh, your father, your grandfather, your brother, your sister, uh, with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Ryan. And, uh, yes, I'd like to also extend my uh, great, uh, sympathy and condolences to the family and, and a big thank you also for sharing him with us and um, I was lucky enough to be able to work with, um, um, Peterson's. He helped shape, uh, the Navajo legal system and certainly the Navo Bar. His advocacy on, on behalf of providing social and legal justice is legendary and certainly was one of the founders for the DNA program, um, out in, uh, uh, tribal lands and, and now encompasses all of Northern Arizona. So uh, it is my, uh, great honor to today vote to declare, uh, March twenty one as Peterson's Day and just thanks, uh, to the family for sharing him with us and, uh, deep condolences, um, uh, for a, a great loss. And, and I know that there might be some comments that, uh, certain, uh, members of the county want to make. So I'll open it up to some county employees and, and then I see we have Eileen Zha with us. So uh, any comments from, um, uh, members of, um, uh, Coconino County staff, uh, county manager?
Madam Chair, I will defer my comments to Jenny Buckingham first.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak and allow me to do the step proclamation. I, I I thank you because I know a lot of people were saddened and heartbroken. Um, we attended his funeral services and the reception, it was good to see there were a lot of people there and, um, I, I just want to send my condolences to the family. So, um, many respectable speakers attended the, the reception, the, and a lot of people, um, stood up, talked about what he stood for and that was reassuring. Um, they considered him as an uncle, um, as an aunt, uh, as a friend, uncle, brother, son, colleague. And it was so nice to hear people talk about the strength that he had, uh, for the nation. And, um, he will be dearly be missed, but I hope this proclamation will bring uh, closure to the family, friends, relatives, plants, and tribes of, um, of, and colleagues of Mr. Zoff and it's time to heal and remember to practice what he brought to our lives. Again, Spago, though, thank you for sharing this beautiful, giant, wonderful man in our life. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny, for those kind and thoughtful words. And, and I do see, uh, any other comments from members of the county. Um, and if not, I see we have both Eileen Zha, the, uh, daughter, uh, of Peterson's and also Janie Parish with us and um, and please join us and we'd love to hear from both of you. Eileen, thank you so much uh, for joining us here and our deepest condolences to you and your family.
Thank you very much. It's been such a wonderful um, time listening to everyone's comments about my dad. And thank you very much, uh, Ms. Jenny Buckingham for reading the proclamation. You did a great job and you said some very wonderful and beautiful things about my dad. Uh, it's always amazing to hear all this, the positive impact that my dad has had on on people's lives and the influence he had in the community, you know, as, uh, his daughter, we only saw him as our dad. So our experience has been a lot different. And all the stories shared really um, transmit a lot of beauty and warmth and, um, provide me and I believe to my siblings, a lot of a lot of, um, uh, healing and, um, just love. So thank you very much for doing this proclamation in my dad's honor and, uh, proclaiming today March twenty first, two thousand twenty-three as Peterson's Day. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So. Janie?
Hi, Yatay. Um, Janie Parish in chat. Um, good afternoon, everybody. I'm, uh, just chiming in. I, I won't take up too much time because we had Eileen and I think that's the best person you can hear from. It's still a little raw, but, um, so thank you for this great day and time to speak as well. But I am one of many, many of the students and mentees that he has had a tremendous impact on. Twenty-two years for me. I was, um, started as his assistant. Um, well, actually, I, I was doing a paper on him. I didn't know we had such a tremendous person at ASU until I met him down the hall and he had a great open door policy. So a lot of students he got to mentor one-on-one and um, in later years, of course, just continued to help. But my only words was thank you for this, Dave, and let's continue his work, um, because what he did for us was to create an army in a good sense, not a scary sense, but in a way so that we can carry on the work that he championed in so many disciplines and so many fields. And he always tried, he always was good at pulling people back to come home and work and do good things. And that's why I came back again two and a half years ago when he called me and said, we need to organize native voters. Um, and I said, okay. So I left back east and came home and, um, I know he's done that for countless others. And he's been a pivotal part of my life as well as, you know, the family overall, Roz, being his partner, his champion, doing all of these wonderful things. Um, and the family. So we, we sent him off in a good way and what some of us, his former students were able to put together was the Petersonzad.com website. And it was a memorial page, but we want to turn it into a legacy page with a lot of links to the work and what he's done. So if many of you haven't seen the memorial service, I highly encourage you to listen. There's many more people, um, that have wonderful things, connections made. And I, the thing that I walked away with from last week was when Manly Bege said, who am I gonna call? Who's gonna call? You know, that was me with Pete, because he did that for so many people, just, hey, you know, this is Pete Zha, what are you up to? And I said, well, Manly, we have to call each other now. So I'm gonna call you and I'm gonna call you Robert Joe and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna scheme, we're gonna plot, we're gonna have fun, we're gonna strategize, and we're gonna carry on Mr. Zha's work. So that's just a little bit, um, from me, but, um, on that legacy site, you know, we, we put a lot of articles written lately and the family knows that we, with them, I'll be, we'll be working with them to figure out how they want it to be. But there's, um, a lot of interviews and a lot of things he's done over the years that, that's hoping that'll be the space where we'll want to accumulate. And a lot of messages, we were able to accumulate a lot of messages shared online. So you'll see the story section. You can add your own. Um, but yeah, a tremendous man and uh, just thank you, Eileen, and, and everybody for this. I can't wait for, to share this with even more people. So thank you. Yeah.
Thank you for joining us and, and for, um, sharing, sharing the information and your story, Janie. Any other comments? And am I missing anyone from the public out there, um, that would like to, uh, be heard, uh, honor Peterson's? Well, with that, and again, we so appreciate the Zha family, uh, and their, um, uh, friends joining us here. And it has been our great honor for many of us to have the opportunity to have met and worked with Peterson's and our great honor here in Coconino County to declare March twenty one, twenty twenty-three as Peterson's Day here in Coconino County. So thank you so much. Um, and with that, we're going to go on to honor, uh, another great leader that has fallen too within the same week. It was just, uh, just amazing. Um, this is a consideration and possible action to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve, offering condolences to the friends and family of Dr. Jack Jackson Senior in recognition of his contributions to the community and to approve a, a proclamation designating March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three as Jack Jackson Senior Day here in Coconino County. And, uh, I'm gonna follow the same, uh, procedure we did before. And we are going to have Health and Human Services Ma- Manager Tamara Little Salt Butler uh, read the proclamation on behalf of Coconino County. So Tamara, please.
It is a great privilege and honor to be able to read this proclamation today. Proclamation designating March twenty-second, tw- twenty twenty-three Senator Jack Jackson Senior Day in Coconino County. Whereas former Arizona State Senator Jack Jackson Senior, born on the Navajo Nation, served on the Navajo Nation Council from nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty-four in the Arizona State House of Representatives from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen ninety-eight and as Arizona State Senator from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand four. And whereas Senator Jackson served in many other governmental and leadership capacities throughout his career, including but not limited to Director of the Dene College Office of Dene Education Philosophy, Executive Director of the Arizona Commission on Indian Affairs, Deputy Director for the Navajo Nation Washington Office, Director of Governmental Affairs for the National Congress of American Indians and on the Advisory Council on HIV/AIDS for Presidents Clinton and Obama. And whereas Senator Jackson was a sponsor or co-sponsor of fourteen Arizona Legislative House bills and sixty-three Arizona Legislative Senate Bills, including his first bill establishing Arizona Indian Legislative Day, now called Indian Nations and Tribes Legislative Day, which occurs on each Wednesday of the first week of each regular legislative session in Arizona, during which elected officials pay tribute to the history and culture of the American Indian peoples and their contributions, their prosperity and cultural diversity of the United States. And whereas Senator Jackson sponsored and co-sponsored many other critical bills for Navajo Nation Health and Education, including the transaction priv- privilege tax, which provided funds to tribal educational institutions, counties, towns, and municipalities and resulted in seventeen point five million dollars in funding for Dene College over ten years. And whereas Senator Jackson earned Bachelor of Science and Master of Science degrees, both in secondary education from Northern Arizona University, obtained a Juris Doctorate Degree from Syracuse University School of Law, and received an honorary doctorate degree from Bakoni College in Muskogee, Oklahoma, formerly the Indian University. And whereas Senator Jackson passed away in Fort Defiance on the Navajo Nation on March fifth, twenty twenty-three at the age of ninety. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Coconino County Board of Supervisors hereby recognize Senator Jack Jackson Senior's countless contributions to the Navajo Nation, Coconino County, the state of Arizona, and the United States of America by proclaiming March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three as Senator Jack Jackson Senior Day in Coconino County. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tamara, uh, for the reading of the proclamation. And members of the board, at this time, I would ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, um, this is Jack Junior, sorry. Uh, there was parts of that proclamation that, uh, included my, my bio. So, um, I, I, I don't know if you want to, uh, take action on it now and
Well, you know, Jack, the, the chip didn't fall very far from the tree with you. There's no question in your father. And I'm so sorry for that and we'll definitely get that, uh, corrected to make that an appropriate proclamation. And thank you for bringing that to our attention. I wish I would have known that earlier and, and we apologize for that and we will definitely make that, uh, correction for you and, um, you know, the, 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 uh, what he has done on behalf of, uh, uh, the Navo Nation and Coconino County in the state of Arizona is is much greater than what we could ever put in the proclamation, but we definitely want to get it correct. So we will just, we will make that. Uh, and instead I'm going to ask for a motion, uh, with a corrected proclamation that will be presented forthwith but declaring and designating March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three as Senator Jack Jackson Senior Day here in Coconino County uh, with a correction to that proclamation, which will be presented and, uh, will be honored by the board at a later date. But at this point, I'd ask for the motion, uh, declaring March twenty-second as Senator Jack Jackson Senior Day here in Coconino County. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion by Supervisor Baguette. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair, Herana Mavasquez. All those in favor of declaring March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three as Senator Jack Jackson Senior Day here in Coconino County, please signify by saying aye. It has passed unanimously. Uh, and with that, I am going to ask members of the board to make their comments. Then members of the county and then we'll, we'll ask members of the family. Uh, so with that, members of the board, any comments you would like to make?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So the corrections will be made and brought back before the, uh, before the board.
Oh, yes, they will.
So I'm thinking that we might be, we might, uh, since we already passed the proclamation for the twenty-second, maybe, uh, at that time, we can have others speak, like, um, the county supervisors and staff. And maybe we could just have the family, since they're here, there to speak, so we'll know.
You, you know, Supervisor Baguette, I, I would like to, I, I can tell you, I would like to make some words now.
Okay, no, that's fine then.
Uh, and, uh, you know, I, I'm very, very pleased that, uh, family members are here and that Jack Jackson Junior is here. Uh, and, uh, for many of us who had, again, the privilege of working with Jack Jackson Senior, both, uh, when he was a legislator, but also just his advocacy on behalf of Navajo education. Um, many of us, uh, myself have worked for forty years, uh, on education on, uh, across Arizona, including on the Navajo Nation. And he was such a leader, such a shining star, such an incredible brilliant light for the path forward, uh, both as a director of the uh, Dene College, an Office of Dene Education, but, uh, on just so many other areas that uh, he embarked on. So, uh, with that, I certainly am so pleased that we in Coconino, I'm very embarrassed that we in Coconino County uh, mixed up the proclamation and we're gonna correct that. But I'm so pleased we here in Coconino County are able to honor, um, uh, your father, Jack, and, uh, to the accomplishments of Jack Jackson Senior. Uh, any other comments from members of the board?
If I may, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Ryan.
Uh, uh, thank you. And, and first and foremost, uh, uh, welcome to Jack Jackson Junior, uh, uh, you know, just a lot of respect for you as well. Uh, your father was at the very beginning of my career, so I didn't get to know him well. Uh, but, uh, I, I can still remember, uh, uh, the first time I met him, going into the office and, uh, he was just, uh, uh, he was, uh, happy, uh, kind, uh, in, in greeting me. And I was such a novice, uh, uh, just, uh, beginning and, uh, and it was, uh, I really appreciated that, uh, uh, but for all the work that he did on behalf of, uh, uh, Navajo people uh, within the state as well. Uh, I do really appreciate that. Uh, for the family, uh, wonderful and as I had noted, uh, really great leader. Uh, we, we offer our utmost respect, uh, our apologies on the, uh, resolution. Uh, that will be corrected. Uh, but the recognition and the designation of the day is, is truly, uh, deserved and, and we want to thank you and, uh, and, uh, we are thinking of you, our hearts are there for you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Ryan. Uh, other members of the board?
I'll go. I just wanted to say thank you, uh, to, uh, to the Jackson family for all, all of his, uh, public service and many years. Again, uh, he's someone that was before my time, but hearing about all the work that he's done, it's obvious that it has a big impact for not just indigenous peoples, but all peoples in the state of Arizona. And so I just want to take a moment to recognize that and say thank you. And, uh, look forward to hearing the new proclamation once it's amended. Thank you.
Thank you. And
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Baguette, please.
Yeah, um, yeah, thank you for, um, being here, um, uh, said, uh, Junior. You know, um, Jack Jackson's, uh, Junior, thank you for being here, you know, amidst us and I certainly want to, um, send my condolences from our families and then to, to you and your families and people that you, you were closely affiliated with. And unfortunately, you know, um, um, we have to face, you know, something like this and, um, we, I am honored to uh, ensure that, you know, and, and also, um, agree with the March twenty-second. and, and also agree with the March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three as a Senior Senator Jack Jackson Senior Day in Coconino County. That means a lot. And there's a lot of things that he was there for. And, you know, as far as, and, and which affected all the communities, not just the native people, but all, everyone in the state of Arizona. And so I just want to say thank you, you know, for sharing your dad, you know, and others, you know, within the family. And, and I just want to say that, you know, it's, it's hard to lose a loved one. But, you know, unfortunately, you know, we just, with the traditional aspects and knowing, you know, that he was a medicine man and spiritual leader. You know, I'm, I'm pretty sure that, you know, we resort to some of those things that will, you know, make us, help us to walk through life and, you know, things like that. So, and I will make more comments when the proclamation is corrected. And so, but I just want to say thank you for coming on. I'm not sure if you have other family members that are here to speak, you know, to the board. We can certainly, you know, afford that opportunity.
Thank you, Supervisor Bagay. Appreciate that. And I'm going to open it up now to members of Coconino County. Comments, County Manager?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and to the family. First, we honor your father. We also honor your family, which is a family that is very much in touch and very deep in public service, as reflected in the careers of all of us here. Jack Jackson Junior, your, 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 your career, as well as your father's, is amazing. Your father's work, not only at the state level, but at the tribal level and all of the dimensions, has, has been beneficial to all residents. And we certainly want to honor that and his legacy. That's, that legacy does not go away. The things that he did, the accomplishments he made, will live forever. And so that, in, in honor to, to you and your family, we honor and we thank you all for your family's history and involvement in public service. It means a lot to everyone. And so I certainly want to apologize on behalf of, of our misstep on the resolution. But of course, we will have that corrected, and we will be posted on the agenda for March twenty-eighth. And so again, our apologies, but again, also an honor to your father and family. We thank you for your work.
Thank you, County Manager. Any other comments from members of the county? And if not, I'd like to turn it over to Jack Jackson Junior, somebody that many of us have known and had the great pleasure to work with over the years. Certainly has been a, a friend of Coconino County and a, a friend to all of Northern Arizona. And it's great to see you, Jack, and thank you so much for joining us here this afternoon. This snowy afternoon here in Flagstaff. I don't know if you're back in DC right now, but we're, we're getting an unbelievable blizzard here. So in, in honor, I think, of two great men that we're acknowledging here today. So, Jack, please, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Supervisor Horseman, and the rest of the, the board, County Board of Supervisors. It is my honor to be here today, and thank you for the resolution honoring my dad, Dr. Jack C. Jackson Senior. Yat Shia, Jack Jackson Junior. I currently am residing in Washington DC, where I work at the Department of Labor with the Biden Administration. I, I would like to begin by just reading a, a family statement that we put out. Dr. Jack C. Jackson's family honors their patriarch, legacy as a spiritual leader, medicine man, educator, legislator, rodeo cowboy, rancher, athlete and coach, and a fierce defender of preserving and prolonging Dene traditions, culture, and language. So future Navajo generations will continue to prosper and thrive. He will be greatly missed and is deeply loved. So I, I, I read that because I think it really captures my dad and the legacy that he will leave, but also talks about all the achievements he was able to do during his ninety years. You know, he's a product of the Navajo Nation, born and raised, really in the heart of the Navajo Nation in Loop, Arizona. I grew up in Tisto with his identical twin brother, Dr. Dean C. Jackson. And so both my dad and my uncle, you know, I think paved the way in many aspects for a lot of Navajos who were either attending rodeos or wanting to, you know, become educators. And so we're just really honored that we're able to call him our dad. My sister, Dr. Florinda Jackson, was, was trying to be here today, but I don't think she was able to make it. But I'm here joined with one of my nieces, Amelia Hubbell. And so we're just really thankful to have had this opportunity. I want to thank Tamara Little Salt Butler for the reading of my dad's proclamation. And again, thanking the board for recognizing March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three as Jack Jackson Senior Day in Coconino County. You know, I had the opportunity to serve with my dad in the Arizona Legislature. He was in the Senate, I was in the House. And we became the first father-son team to serve together, and I think we might still have that honor. And so I certainly understand the, the mix-up in the proclamation. When you have Junior next to a person like my dad, you know, it's, it's, it's easy to, to have that type of mix-up, so we certainly understand. But again, I just wanted to thank all of you here for your, for your kind words. And so I don't know if my niece Amelia would like to say a few words, but on behalf of our entire family, thank you all. Aye.
Thank you very much, Jack. Amelia, you don't need to, but if you don't, thank you so much for being here and to hear the proclamation honoring Senator Jack Jackson Senior Day here in Coconino County, and for all the great service and work and leadership, and just our deepest condolences to the Jackson family. Filled with lots of leaders and quite frankly, a lot of educators. Many of them I've had the great pleasure of working with over the years. So thank you so much, and for all that your family has done to enrich our lives here in Coconino County and state of Arizona. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I just forgot to add. Doctor, or President Peterson Za, he and my dad were of the same clan. So I called Doctors Peterson Za, my father. He helped pave the way for me and my political career and my, 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 my public service, starting out in Washington DC at the Navajo Washington Office, when Pete Za became the first Navajo president. So hold him in high regard and also sympathy to the family as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Jack. So, and thank you, Amelia and Jack, for being with us here this afternoon. So appreciated and deepest condolences to your family.
Thank you.
Thank you. So. Well, probably nothing else we're going to do today is going to be as important as what we've just done, acknowledging two very, very important people here for us in Coconino County and for the state. And it's really my great pleasure that the county is taking the leadership and declaring the March twenty-first and March twenty-second for these two great men. So thank you, members of the board and Coconino County for doing this. With that, we're going to move forward with the Board of Supervisors Consent Agenda. And members of the board, members of the public, this is our time for the board to entertain through one motion and one vote items that are more administrative or ministerial in nature and that do not require an individual discussion or individual.
Madam Chair, if I may, we, we have one more proclamation.
Oh. Thank goodness you're paying attention, Supervisor. Just checking, just to make sure. Sorry about that. And yes, we do have another very important proclamation, and I do apologize. And this is one that has, unfortunately, keeps coming up. And it's, it's a time, hopefully, that our country, our nation, ourselves will go by and see ourselves for the nation that we should be, so that we don't need to keep having April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. But our next proclamation is consideration and possible action to approve a proclamation designating April, two thousand twenty-three as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I do understand that we have Betty Goodwin from the Exchange Club, who is going to be here with us this afternoon to read this important proclamation. Betty, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Great. And thank you for joining us here this afternoon. And looking forward to your reading of this important proclamation. So thank you, Betty.
Thank you. On behalf of the Exchange Club of Flagstaff, I thank the county for continuing to make this proclamation. As you stated, I look forward to the day this doesn't have to be done. But I will read the proclamation now. Coconino County Proclamation Designating April, two thousand twenty-three as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas keeping children safe is a community responsibility, and child abuse prevention must be a community effort and a top priority. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed in part because of partnerships created among social service agencies, health and law enforcement professionals, schools, businesses, the media, government agencies, community and faith organizations, and especially parents. And whereas the earlier that quality intervention is provided to a child and family in crisis, and also the community as a whole takes an interest in providing for the development of youth resiliency, the better chance for positive outcomes and life successes. And whereas child abuse and neglect not only harm children, but increase the likelihood of judicial system involvement, substance abuse, health problems, and risky behaviors. And whereas prevention programs and resiliency strategies targeted toward our youth offer positive alternatives for young people and encourage them to develop strong ties to the community. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim April, two thousand twenty-three as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and call upon all Coconino County citizens and organizations to observe this month by demonstrating our gratitude to those who work to keep our children safe and by taking action in our own communities to make them healthy places where children can grow and thrive.
Thank you very much, Betty, for the reading of that proclamation. I'm going to follow the same procedure as our prior two proclamations. So I'm going to entertain a motion designating April, two thousand twenty-three as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Motion by Supervisor Ryan. Do I have a second? Second by Vice Chair Heranamovasquez. All those in favor of designating April, two thousand twenty-three as Child Abuse Prevention Month, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, very good. And with that, Betty, would you like to say anything on, on just what you're planning to do? And then I'm going to open up to members of the board for comments. So.
On April fifth at noon, the club and all members of the community are invited to gather at the lawn of the county courthouse at San Francisco and Burt, where we will be erecting what we refer to as the Field of Hope. We put a flag up, a child abuse prevention flag up for every child that died in Arizona the previous year. Unfortunately, last year, we put up ninety-five flags. This year, we are putting up one hundred twenty-eight flags. We've never put that many up before. The flags will be up day and night through Sunday, the ninth. On Friday, the seventh, at five fifteen, we will have a dedication of the field. All the public is invited to join us at that. It will be at the county courthouse lawn. And part of the ceremony is actually the fields will be, the flags will be put to one side of the field. And during the ceremony, the public will be allowed to take flags and put them up. Most of the flags, if not all of them, will have a tag indicating the age of the child that flag represents, everything from zero to seventeen. Fifty-nine percent of the one hundred and twenty-eight were children one year old or younger.
And that's on the, the seventh of April at five o'clock, is that correct, at the courthouse?
Five fifteen, yes.
Five fifteen, thank you.
Yes.
I know many of, I know both Vice Chair and I took part in that last year. It was very, not only is it an incredibly symbolic event, but just very, lets you know how important it is for this proclamation and how important it is that all of us, as a community, do what we can to end the child abuse. It's, I'm sorry, there are more flags, Betty, that, that's very heartbreaking. We, we need to take action to change that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Betty. And members of the board, comments from the members of the board? Supervisor Ryan? Oh, no, you just said the other way. Okay. Vice Chair Vasquez.
Those are real sobering numbers, and it's really unfortunate and sad having attended the, the ceremony last year, and, and those numbers were just astounding and couldn't believe it. And to find out that it's increased, you know, by, by thirty, almost thirty children, that's heartbreaking and, and just really goes to show how much work we have to do to protect our young people. And so, you know, I, I hope folks will, will really take this to heart and take, do everything that we can to help prevent child abuse and, and help support organizations like yours, working with the community so that we can educate folks and, and really protect our, our young people, because that's our future, and that's, you know, that is just so, so important. So thank you for bringing this proclamation forward. And just like you said, it's unfortunate that we have to do so another year. And it's even more unfortunate that we have to do so under higher numbers. Hopefully, the work that we do in this next year, we can't, we can, we can slowly pull that, those numbers down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Other comments? Supervisor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I was referring to Mr. Vice Chair. But Betty, thank you for reading the proclamation. Really appreciate it. But even further beyond, for the club's involvement in helping us raise this to a level that people understand that we have not some very bad things still within our community that we need to be conscious of. And in the meantime, the opportunity by doing this, and the flags are truly noticed when they're up. People, if they don't know, are asking about them. But even more importantly, encouraging family members to seek services if they need services. This is a key piece that can come out of this and, and help people in the future. So as noted, not something that we want to celebrate, but certainly something that we do want to recognize and bring attention to and see if we can move towards zero, well, continue zero tolerance and, of course, resolving these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bagay?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess that this, this proclamation, in a sense, it reminds us to keep our children safe out there in the communities and be, to be more resilient. And we just all need to help one another, you know, spreading the word about child prevention, which will, you know, help the people to strengthen the families and to help them thrive in the, within the community. I guess we, the bottom line is we just all need to work together to identify the needs and the interventions and prevent, and then getting word out there about prevention and just, just help one another, you know, to, to, to preserve and help the families that, that are, are facing this crisis. So, and, and with that, you know, I think, you know, doing this proclamation is something that's a step forward, and we just need to continue, you know, to, to do this so that, you know, hopefully, one day, you know, things are turned around instead of going up as it is right now. So I just want to thank you, the board, you know, for making this comment.
Thank you, Supervisor Bagay. And Betty, yes, we, we look forward to the day when we just will be celebrating children playing on the playgrounds and in the parks and, and not having to have. and not having to have this symbolic action that will be taking place coming up for Child Prevention Awareness Month. And I will see you on the seventh. It was a very, very meaningful to take part in that last year, and I will be there again. I think it's a important representation for our community to be together and acknowledge the importance of keeping our children safe and creating a happy and healthy environment for them. So Betty, thank you for all you do and what the Exchange Club does to bring this to our community's attention. Really appreciate that.
Well, thank you to you and to the rest of the board. We do appreciate the support you give us.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the county, county staff? All right, with that, we will move forward. I was already trying to do that, and I'm really glad I was called back, Betty, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
And members of the board, now, really, I promise, we're here for the consent agenda. And we've had three very important proclamations. This is the consent agenda. This is more administrative or ministerial in action that can be decided through one motion and one vote. However, members of the board, now is the time if we as board members would like to remove something from the consent agenda for individual discussion and individual motions in action. And I have been asked to remove item number eleven to separate that, to provide some remarks and information to us on number eleven. And I am going to ask to remove eight just briefly for just brief discussion. So I'm going to ask to remove eight and eleven from the consent agenda. Any other items to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda four through, four through ten, removing items eight and eleven. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion, but I'll correct that. We're making a motion, items four through fifteen, with the exception of eight and eleven. And so that is, that is my motion. Madam Chair, we're here for each other here.
I tell you, that's what's happening. It snows outside, and I'm just watching the deer out there, and no. It is four through fifteen, removing eleven and eight.
Correct.
For the record. Thank you, Supervisor Ryan. I appreciate you. And is that a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Bagay. All those in favor of passing the consent agenda, items four through fifteen with the exclusion of eight and eleven, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Members of the board, we are moving forward to the individual items, number eight. And I ask for this to be removed. It's consideration and possible action to approve the community initiative funding in the amount of one thousand fifty dollars from District One and one thousand fifty dollars from District Two for a total of twenty-one hundred dollars for the Flagstaff Shakespearean Festival for seniors to attend the Romeo and Juliet performance and approve the correspondent funding agreement. And I ask to have this removed just for a comment. First of all, I want to thank Vice Chair Heranamavasquez in joining me with this. And also to Flagshakes, who are offering their wonderful talent and their wonderful, their wonderful actors to perform Romeo and Juliet at the Joel Montoya Senior Center. And it provides a marvelous opportunity for those who attend the senior center to take part in Flagshakes. So we really appreciate Flagstaff Shakespearean Festival for doing this. And I hope to attend and enjoy the play there at the Joe Montoya Senior Center. So any comments, Vice Chair, or do you want to make the motion?
I'd just like to say I'm looking forward to seeing the play as well. So it's a pleasure to be able to support these kind of artistic activities in our community, especially for our seniors at Joel Montoya. Joel Montoya. And so with that, excuse me? Oh, with that, I'll go ahead and set the motion that we approve number eight, which is CI money for a total of twenty-one hundred dollars, a thousand fifty from District One and a thousand fifty from District Two.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Second by Matt Ryan. Are you going to say Joel Montoya three times real fast or not?
I could see Joel Montoya laughing and scolding us at this point, you know.
Oh, we have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair? If I could make a comment very quickly, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So item eight, we're going to make a footnote on item eight, but it has been adopted by the consent. We were intended to pull that for separate discussion and make a comment regarding the Juvenile Court's participation in the Georgetown program. So if I could, we, since the action's been taken, if I could just have an opportunity to make a comment with regard, and Monique is saying we cannot do that.
No, it's item eleven, Steve.
It's item eleven, Steve. We already withdrew it.
Okay.
Yeah, I withdrew, I withdrew that. I remembered that. I've forgotten a lot of things today, but I remembered that.
Monique and I are in the Brady Bunch top corner right here.
You guys are.
Yeah.
And now we're going to go to number eleven, because consideration and possible action to approve two hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars budget increase from the Arizona Supreme Court Administrative Offices of the Courts, Juvenile Justice Service Division for the operation of JJSD funds, including juvenile intensive probation supervision, standard probation, juvenile probation service fund treatment, diversion intake and diversion consequence programs for the fiscal year 2023, which will increase the total JJSD budget to two million five hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars. And I know this was asked to be separated regarding the department's acceptance of the Advancing Racial Justice and Equity in Youth Legal Systems Certification Program and to make comments. So I'm going to turn this over to you, County Manager.
Thank you. And Israel, can you come up? Izzy, can you come on live here? So Madam Chair, as we take the action, we do want to have a note of the department, as Juvenile Court is going to be participating in a special program that is related to this, to this grant, but I wanted to give the opportunity for Israel Garcia from Juvenile Court to make a comment with regard to the program you just mentioned. And then at that time, after that, the board can take the action on this particular contract item. So, Israel?
Very good.
Good afternoon. I want to share with you the program that we got accepted to. I'm going to read you a summary of what the program entails and kind of our role in there. So the program's going to be at Georgetown University, and it's called the Advancing Racial Justice and Equity in Youth in the Legal Systems. And it's an intensive training program designed to support local jurisdictions in their effort to promote racial justice and equity in the systems of care, particularly in youth in the legal system. There's three primary goals. It's gain a better understanding of anti-racist frameworks through a community development and prevention model, utilize practical skills and tools to enter, engage in, and support work on anti-racism in youth justice system, and adapt and create strategies to practice anti-racism and to address the over-representation and equities of youth of color in the systems of care. So we are one of six teams selected nationwide. We were told it was a very competitive process. It's going to be one week at the end of April. And they give us a lot of coursework to get prepared for the program. And our goal is to battle the disproportionate minority representation, sorry, in our system, particularly with Native American youth and families. And this program will give us the educations and the tools we need to better battle this problem. So this is a collaborative effort. We're going to work together with the county attorney's office, the superintendent of schools, Flagstaff Unified School District, and four members of our staff will be attending this. That's all I have. Anybody have any questions for us?
Any questions? Sounds like a great program, a wonderful opportunity, Izzy, for you and for the county. And really appreciate you bringing this to our attention and for taking part in this.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we're very excited about it. Something that's very important to our department. We really think it will serve our community well.
I agree very much. Other comments, questions from members of the board before we entertain a motion?
Chair, just quickly, a comment would be, you know, I've just been so fascinated on the work that y'all have been doing over the juvenile system. And this is another piece added to it where you're out seeking opportunities and creating a dynamic process, innovative, and really appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Really is. Other comments, questions? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion. Sorry, Supervisor Bagay?
I'm just reading the alternatives to this budget. If it wasn't considered, it says alternatives to not to accept the state funding and have the county cover the deficit through general funds. I just want to say that, you know, we did accept the state funding. We're not going to get the state funding.
That is correct.
Okay.
And that is the action that you're about to take, so that would help us do that. Thank you.
What's Vice Chair Vasquez?
Yeah, I was just going to say congratulations to your team, for the juvenile team to be one of six programs in the state, as so, to be chosen. So that's, that's really exciting. You know, taking that approach of more restorative justice and and looking at ways to train our staff and work with youth in a positive way is really exciting. So congratulations on getting chosen and look forward to seeing the results of this new programming.
It's actually nationwide, and so one of sixteen nationwide. So again, very.
I didn't want to assume that it was so grand, but that's even more impressive. So congratulations, one of.
Thank you. I just had to throw that in there.
So Vice Chair, would you like to make the motion at number eleven?
Sure. I'll make the motion that we approve a two hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-four budget increase from the Arizona Supreme Court Administrative Offices of the Courts, Juvenile Justice Services Division for the operations of JJSD funds, including juvenile intensive probation supervision, standard probation, juvenile probation services, fund treatment, diversion intake, and diversion consequences programs for the fiscal year 2023. This increase will bring the total JJSD budget to two million five hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Bagay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. So we are moving along on our agenda. Members of the board, it's two fourteen. Should we, we'll take it, we'll take it up to the public hearing, and then we'll take a break just before the public hearing. So let's move forward then on the Flood Control District action item. We need to resolve as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Do I have a motion?
So move, second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you very much. We are now the Flood Control District Board of Directors. We have item number sixteen. Consideration and possible action to approve a budget authority and expenditure limit increase to the Flood Control District in the amount of nine million five hundred and forty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars for the Natural Resource Conservation Services, NRCS Award, Agreement Number NR2394570000C001, to allow the Flood Control District to complete neighborhood mitigation efforts in the Wapackee Trails and Brandis Way flood corridors. And with that, I am assuming that this is going to the Flood Control District Director. Is that correct? Is Lucinda with us?
Madam Chair, in Lucinda's absence today, Sean Puyama will be presenting the item.
Thank you very much.
Sean is the business manager for the Flood Control District. Sean?
Thanks, County Manager. Sean, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Can you please going to present on item number sixteen, give us some background information that you might have on this item?
Yes, absolutely. So, Madam Chair, this, this item is in reference to the NRCS Award Agreement that we had previously brought to the Board of Directors regarding the Wapackee Trails and Brandis Way in neighborhood flood corridor work. This item is fairly just administrative for the finance team to provide us the budget authority and do a budget amendment to allow us to go ahead and begin using the funds that have been awarded. Again, this is a reimbursement process. So this allows us to go ahead and issue POs and start doing the work that we need to do with the understanding that the funds will be reimbursed. And as such, we've had account, revenue accounts created to house those reimbursement when they come into the Flood Control District.
All right. Any comments, questions for members of the board? I, we have previously, I think, supported the amount of one million ninety-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-five, as well as the district match of two million one hundred and eleven dollars, eight hundred and seventy, or eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, which I understand from clarification from the county manager will be and is part of that ten point nine, the county match is coming from that ten point nine million that was awarded to us from the state of Arizona. Is that correct, County Manager?
That is correct, Madam Chair. And that actually award came from, yeah, it was from, from, from DFFM, so. So thank you.
Correct. All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions from members of the board? And if not, I would entertain a motion.
Oh, okay. Sure, I'll go ahead, Madam Chair. I want to read that same number as you read, so I'll go ahead and move that we approve the request to provide Flood Control District and budget authority and expenditure limit increase in the amount of nine million five hundred forty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars for the Natural Resource Conservation Service, NRCS, Award Agreement Number NR239457000C001, to allow the Flood Control District to complete neighborhood mitigation efforts in the Wapackee Trails and Brandis Way flood corridors. I just wanted to replicate your excellent reading of that, Madam Chair.
I think you missed a zero, Matt.
I had no zeros.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Vasquez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is once again unanimous. So members of the board, we must now resolve back as the Board of Supervisors. Do I have such a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Supervisor Bagay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now the Board of Supervisors, and I'm going to ask we take a five-minute break. Then we're going to go to our public hearing.
We're good.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Julie. Sorry. You're on mute. Thanks for joining us. I just wanted to pull you over to panelists so we can make sure we can see you, hear you.
Hi Gregory.
Hi Lindsay.
Oh, you cut out.
Oh, thank you.
There you go.
Let me know when the board members are back. Just if you wouldn't mind turning your camera on so I can make sure you're with us. All right, I think we're all back. So we will proceed with our agenda. I think our County Manager is back with us. All right, we need our fearless leader before we move forward. Public hearing. This is number seventeen, public hearing. Consideration and possible action to make a recommendation to the Arizona Department of Revenue regarding a Class A bingo license application for applicant Happy Jack Lodge located at five three eight seven eight Lake Mary Road in Happy Jack, Arizona, eight six zero two four. And we have the contact person Julie Pendergast is with us. Thank you for joining us this afternoon, Julie. And this is the first time that I've seen a Class A bingo license application come before the county. And so I'm going to turn this over to the woman who knows it all, our clerk Lindsay Daly to talk to us and, and give us the procedure necessary for this hearing. So Lindsay, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Chair Horseman. This is actually my first time receiving a bingo application as well since I've been the clerk. So we don't get these too often. And thankfully Julie's here if there's any questions regarding her specific application, but it's similar to the liquor license applications that we see, except these run through the Department of Revenue at the state. And so the applicant sends us their application prior to the state because part of their application to the state is a recommendation from the local governing entity. So it really just is outlined in statutes, the board's role in this process. Just explaining that the board is required to have a hearing within forty-five days of receiving an application for a bingo, a bingo license. And I will just note, a Class A license cannot exceed seventy-five thousand dollars per year in gross receipts. And they are taxed at two point five percent of their adjusted gross receipts. So the difference between A and then B and C, that is the amount left, if any, after paying for prizes. And then Class B and Class C licenses are dedicated to raising funds for the sponsoring charitable organizations. So that's just the slight difference between the licenses and then also the fee that the applicant has to pay. The state is a difference between those as well. As you said, Chair Horseman, this is for an application for Happy Jack Lodge, which is located at five three eight seven eight Lake Mary Road in Happy Jack, Arizona, just Supervisor District Four. We did send the application as part of our process to various departments, a little different than the liquor licenses. We do include the Community Development Director, our Risk Manager, Health and Human Services Department, Sheriff's Office, as well as the Treasurer's Office for review of the application. And as you can see in your packet, none of them had concerns regarding the application. And so that's pretty much it for, for the bingo liquor license application. And then once the board makes a recommendation, we include that to the State Department of Revenue.
Is there a notice requirement to the, the neighbors or anything like that at all, Lindsay?
There is not. That was my specific question to the Arizona Department of Revenue because usually for liquor licenses, we have to do a physical posting at the site where the license is going to be operating. The State Department of Revenue has said, no, that we do not have to do any sort of publishing in the newspaper, no physical posting at the site. It's just more of an opportunity for people to join the meeting, or if they see it on the agenda, to voice any comments that they might, may want to voice. It's really up to the board just to make the recommendation based on knowledge of the neighborhood and the community, specifically where the bingo license will be operating.
So the application was complete, and I assume when you send it to all the departments, there were, there was no concerns that were raised. Is that correct?
That is correct, Chair Horseman.
So the statutory portion for requesting a bingo license has been met. Is that true?
That's correct.
Very good. Members of the board, any questions that you may have to ask our clerk? Otherwise, I'll ask Julie to provide us some information and then I'll open this up for a, a public hearing. So any comments, questions for members of the board? Supervisor Brigade, this is in your district. Do you have any comments or questions you'd like to make?
Madam Chair, I, I was just concerned about the comments portion of it, and that's what's been clarified for us, you know, regarding if we had to do that in most cases, that things that come before us as a hearing. We've always had, you know, some kind of posting or, you know, but I'm, you know, it's good to know that it went through the process, the application process and everything is good. And so I, you know, I, I feel, you know, that this is a, a good and maybe possible recommendation to the Arizona Department of Revenue would be, would be something that we might be able to do. So thank you so much.
Thank you Supervisor, supervisor Ryan.
Sure. Madam Chair, this is the second one that we have down in the Blue Ridge area. Wondering Julie, if you're going to have leagues competing with each other or anything like that. One thing that I've learned is now it's not all seniors, but there are quite a few seniors that attend and don't get between their bingo and what's going on. So that'll be an area we'll be thinking about as we go for consideration, right? All right. It's, it's neat. It's a unique thing.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan. And I don't know about you, but I want to go. I want to play bingo. I'm ready. So, and before I turn this over to Julie, I have a very important question. Are you in Happy Jack right now? What's the weather in Happy Jack right now? And you're, you're, you're muted here, so.
It is a winter wonderland as I look outside right now. It's very heavy, very heavy snowfall.
It's what we've got here as well. So it's beautiful. Well, Julie, before I open this up, is there anything you'd like to present to the board here on your, your, your application for a Class A bingo license?
First, I just want to thank you for the consideration today for taking action on the, the request that we have in front of you. We have from the community and patrons here, they requested this last year that we have more activities for people in the community and, and for guests staying here. So this is, you know, one of the first steps we're taking along with taking some other input this last year to bring social gatherings for folks. I just want to point out that this is going to be for recreation and social. We are not going to keep any of the gross receipts. We'll go right all to, to prizes. So this will, basically, we're not going to do any type of keeping any of the gross receipts. We're going to give it back because again, the intent is to have fun and fellowship. And again, thank you for the time today.
Very good. Thank you, Julie. And thanks for being with us. With that, unless there are other comments from the board, I am ready to open this up for a public hearing. Members of the board, this is, or I'm sorry, members of the public, this is your time to address the board on the Class A bingo license application for applicant Happy Jack Lodge located on Lake Mary Road there in Happy Jack, Arizona. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to the clerk to explain to the public how you can join us in this public hearing. So Lindsay, please.
Thank you, Chair Horseman. At this time, if there is anyone that would like to make a comment during this public hearing, you can hit the raise hand icon that will appear if you hover towards the bottom of your screen. It looks like a hand. If you click on that, that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak. If you've joined the meeting by telephone, you can hit star nine and that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak.
Thank you. Members of the public, now's your time.
And there are no hands raised.
So final call, members of the public on this Class A bingo license application for Happy Jack Lodge.
And no hands raised, Chair Horseman.
Very good. With that, I am closing the public hearing. Are there any other comments or questions or concerns from members of the board? And if not, I would entertain a motion by Supervisor Begay on this, on this item number seventeen. Supervisor Begay, you are muted.
I think we need to do a signal here. Sometimes maybe scratch your head or something when so that Matt can continue, get gay on the, get back on. But anyway, I would, this is my motion. I'd like to make a motion or a recommendation to the Arizona Department of Revenue regarding a Class A bingo license application for applicant Happy Jack Lodge LLC located at five three eight seven eight Lake Mary Road, Happy Jack, Arizona, eight six zero two four. And the contact person is Julie Pendergast. Thank you.
Very good. We have a motion from Supervisor Brigade. Do I have a second?
I'd like to second the motion, Madam Chair, and note that the recommendation is for approval. Thank you.
There is a recommendation for approval. We have the motion and the second. All those in favor of approving to the Arizona Department of Revenue a Class A bingo license application for Happy Jack Lodge, please signify by saying aye. It is unanimous. So Julie, thank you for joining us and we look forward to joining you out there at Happy Jack. Appreciate it. Members of the board, we are moving along. We have some discussion items. And I understand we're going to switch the order here a little bit. Our first discussion item is going to be nineteen and we'll take eighteen after nineteen. And nineteen is, and I think we're right, on, on presentation and a discussion from the Greater Flagstaff Forest Partners Partnership regarding funding received. And I understand County Manager that Finance Director Siri Mulaney will introduce this item. Is that correct?
That is correct. And she is on and we're pulling presenters over as we speak. So he'll give us a moment.
Very good. So members of the board, we are now on item number nineteen.
So I see Anne, and then I see Andrew Joel. And who else? Jay Smith.
We have Neil Chapman with us.
I do not see Neil yet.
Sorry, I was on mute. Neil was called out of town at the last minute to Washington DC for a wildfire crisis management strategy meeting. So unfortunately, he couldn't be here today.
He's probably with our Deputy County Manager, Lucinda Andriani back there in Washington. So good, good.
Yeah.
I think everyone is here, so Siri can go and introduce the topic and we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. So just as a reminder, at our last meeting, we invited other community partners to come and present on some of the good work that they're doing with county funds that are allocated each year through the budget process. So we have two more of those today, starting with the Forest Partnership. And so with, without further ado, I'll just turn it over to their team to walk through their presentation and to give you some updates.
Thank you.
Okay, great. And do you want me to share my screen or how, or are you going to project the PowerPoint?
I'm not sure how that was arranged. Anne, let's see here. Siri is Anne going to do that? Is she going to show the screen or is the county got this ready for production?
Anne, if you can go ahead and share your screen, if you have it up, that would be great. But if you need my assistance, let me know and I will grab your presentation and pull it up.
See here. And just one sec. Sorry about that.
We're waiting for you to do that. I'll just point out that we did receive some great information from the Greater Flagstaff Forest Partnerships in our offices this last week. And hopefully everybody had a chance to review that as well. So thank you for anyone who, or everyone who dropped that off. Appreciate it.
Think I might have it now. Can you see that?
Yes, we can.
How's that?
There it goes. Now it's off of PowerPoint. We see it perfect.
Okay, there we go. So thank you so much for having us today. My name is Anne Mottak and I oversee the Greater Flagstaff Forest Partnership and we're really happy to be here with the County Board of Supervisors. It's been a long time and of course, because of COVID, we haven't had a lot of chance to interact. So I'm very excited to be here today. As you know, Neil Chapman is on our board and I do want to introduce the rest of the Board of Directors because he's with the City of Flagstaff Fire Department. We also have Andrew Sanchez Medor, who is the Executive Director of the Ecological Restoration Institute. And Jay Smith, who is the Forest Restoration Director of Coconino County Flood Control District that you all know pretty well. Love having Jay on our board. He's wonderful. So I know that some of you are new and not as familiar with GFPP. So I wanted to provide a little bit of background. GFPP was established back in nineteen ninety-six when we had relatively large wildfires in Coconino County and near the city of Flagstaff. These were fires that were five thousand and fifteen thousand eight These were fires that were five thousand and fifteen thousand acres, and at the time, those were huge. Of course, we know the wildfire crisis is upon us and it's much larger fires than we had back then. GFFP is a grassroots community organization. We support and lead collaborative efforts. We're a leader in scientific approaches to forest ecosystem restoration. We have always had ERI, the Ecological Restoration Institute, involved with GFFP. We lead in public awareness, understanding, and support for forest restoration and the wildfire, severe wildfire risk, and what we're doing to reduce wildfires in our area. GFFP is one of the longest standing forest restoration collaboratives in the country, and we're recognized as a national model. And we have various organizations that are represented within the partnership, including academic, private, municipal, state, and federal agencies. Our vision is to research and demonstrate the various approaches to forest ecosystem restoration in the forests, and our actions are based on improving the overall sustainability and resiliency of the forest in the greater Flagstaff area. And through our vision, we have four main areas that we work in. Multi-agency planning and implementation of forest restoration projects. And forest restoration projects, we often call them treatments. And when we say treatments, that means prescribed fire and thinning trees. We also work in monitoring and adaptive management, utilization of the woody biomass that comes off the forest, and outreach and education. So we provide an expansive professional network to accomplish government entities and other partners' goals. These are a few examples of our monthly partnership meetings. Last year in January, we had Senator Kelly's staff discuss the initiation of the Community Wildfire Defense Grant Program, and they solicited input from the partnership. In November of last year and January of this year, we did a fire and flood series, and we had Alan Hayden from Natural Channel Design, yours truly Jay Smith from the Flood Control District, and Matt McGrath from the Coconino National Forest discussed the fires and floods from last summer. And, and what we're going to do to help mitigate the, these issues in the coming years. This is a quick photo of a field tour that we conducted on Hart Prairie, and this was looking at the Meadow Restoration Project and the Wood for Life Program that's being conducted there. So we wanted to discuss, and I know you wanted us to discuss, the outcomes of county funding from fiscal year twenty to date. And these are the main areas that we focused on, and instead of going through the slide one by one, I will detail this out in the coming slides. So, and we, we work on cost share forest treatments, and we have completed several. One is that I think it really occurred fiscal year nineteen into a little bit of fiscal year twenty was that we were funded and we completed fifty-seven acres on county-owned land behind Secret Elementary School. Some of you may remember that project. We were also funded and completed treatments on a hundred and thirty-three acres at the Northern Arizona Healthcare Site, which is adjacent to Fort Tuthill County Park. We have also worked on cost share grant recommendations for the Community Wildfire Defense Grant Funding, which is new. That started last year. It's IIJA funded. And we also put in two proposals through the Healthy Forest Initiative Grant, and also through the Community Wildfire Defense Grant Program for the Bear Aspen Preserve, is better known as the Better Place Forest Property, for sixty-seven acres on steep slopes on the west side of San Francisco Peaks. And since two thousand and four, GFFP's cost share total funding is equal to about two million dollars, and we've treated over three thousand acres of land. We also work with the Flagstaff Watershed Protection Project, we're the primary stakeholder group for that. We also assist them with outreach and education to the public, and we ID properties for cost share grant applications. We have also worked with the For Forest Restoration Initiative. We contributed to the final environmental impact statement for Rim Country, which is the second analysis area. Three of us act as steering committee and stakeholder group chairs, and we are represented on the stakeholder group itself. That is a big lift. It's a lot of time and a lot of work. It's about six-month stints and Supervisor Horseman is shaking her head. I know you're at a lot of the meetings. I see you there. We also contribute to their leverage funds. We work with the Forest Service nationally and locally. We provide an opportunity for the Coconino to provide updates to GFFP partners. And then we have also worked more on a national level, and we've contributed to the Conservation Finance Roundtables, as well as the Confronting the Wildfire Crisis Strategy Roundtables, and we incorporate the Wood for Life Program whenever we can. We are also a member for about ten years now of the National Fire Adapted Communities Learning Network. And with that network, not only are we a member, but we do get small amounts of funding to complete projects. One of the projects that we completed was cocowildfire.org. It is a website that is designed for residents and visitors who, if there were, if there was a out-of-control wildfire in Coconino County, there are reliable websites on cocowildfire.org where they can access information. We also chair the Wood Utilization Community of Practice, and we've continued to develop and chair the statewide network, the Arizona Fire Adapted Communities, AZFAC. And the rest of the bullets you can read. I know you have this in your packets, but it just talks about the different events that we've held for this statewide network. We also have a Forest Biomass Coalition that is a working group underneath GFFP. And this group is working to address the lack of forest biomass processing facilities on the western side of the state. There is a forest biomass energy plant in Snowflake on the eastern side of the state, but not here in the western side. So we feel if we can figure this issue out, that we can increase the pace and scale of forest treatments on the western side of the state. We can also add, because we're a five oh one C three, we can act as a fiscal sponsor for grant applications for this group. We've also worked with NAU's School of Forestry. As an example, we presented to NAU's Dine Institute for Navajo Educators, and we showcased the Fort Tuthill County Park Forest Restoration and Demonstration Area to them last summer. And we also present to NAU's Ecological Restoration Class each year. For Coconino County, we assisted the county in planning the Parks Community Forest Health and Safety Fair. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we were never able to implement that, but that is something that we worked on for many months. We also presented to the Sedona Westerners Hiking Club on the importance of prescribed fire and mitigating smoke effects. And the county benefited from all these highlighted outcomes that I just reviewed. This is a historical picture of the County Board of Supervisors tour at the Fort Tuthill Thinning Project.
Historical? My gosh, it must have been last year.
Yeah, it was hysterical.
I knew you would like that picture. I gotta dig up that picture. I know, I was like, yeah, remember that? It was pretty funny. Yeah, really wonderful. So our outlook for fiscal year twenty-four, I'm not going to go over all of this, and again, you can read this because a lot of it is similar to what I just outlined. But I am going to highlight a few items. We are going to really focus on the Community Wildfire Defense Grant Program, and we want to put in a proposal for Section seventeen behind Lowell Observatory. It's six hundred plus acres. It's one of the last sections on Observatory Mesa that has not been treated, critical wooey area. So that's something we're going to focus on. We're also going to focus on applying for grants to develop CWPPs and update CWPPs, and the ones that need updating are for the communities of Flagstaff, Williams, Tucson, and Blue Ridge. And the ones that we need to develop, they don't have a CWPP, a Community Wildfire Protection Plan, is Forest Lakes and Fredonia. And then on the other slide that I wanted to highlight with the Coconino National Forest, we have a meeting set up next week with a lot of stakeholders, and we're going to assist them with a public outreach campaign for their prescribed fire program. There's going to be a lot more prescribed fire on the ground and a lot more associated smoke. So we want to get the public ready for that. And we're also going to help them promote the new fire restrictions that they have on the San Francisco Peaks, as well as project firewise practices and principles so that folks understand how they can firewise their properties. So here's another one that you may like, you know, another little bit of history. Back in twenty nineteen, GFFP was awarded the Wildfire Mitigation Award, and this was a joint city council and county board of supervisors meeting. And you can also see that we were recognized from the governor, and also on the right, a certificate from Senator McSally's office at the time. And this is the Northern Arizona Healthcare Project. I wanted to show you these because they're quite impressive. These are aerial photos on the upper left. This is before treatments occurred, before thinning. And the bottom right is after treatments, and you can see the huge difference in tree density, and that we're really reducing wildfire risk in a very critical wooey area. The county park is just adjacent to that on the right-hand side, and on the left-hand side is Bula Boulevard Highway eighty-nine A. And this is a photo from our field tour at the Northern Arizona Healthcare Project, and we were awarded ADQ's Copper Voluntary Environment Storage Program recognition, and it acknowledges completion of a project that resulted in measurable improvements to the environment. And in your packets, I just wanted to point out that we included our twenty twenty-two annual report, and all of our annual reports are on our website. We also included our accomplishments report, and this is updated annually. This is an article about the Northern Arizona Healthcare Project and our award in the this year's For Fry Newsletter. I believe these are also in your packets. This is our Treatment Effectiveness Newspaper insert that we developed so the public understands that forest treatments work, they're necessary, and what happens if treatments do not occur, which is of course severe wildfires. Also in your packet is this newspaper insert as well, and it is describing prescribed fire. It's really supporting that, and it's backed by science. And it really shows the difference between prescribed fire and wildfire and the different smoke effects, and how we have to promote prescribed fire and accept it. Lastly, in your packet, you'll find this, and this is really a firewise insert that we did in cooperation with the University of Arizona so people can figure out how to firewise their homes. And for those of you who may not be aware, GFFP, along with Coconino County and ERI, designed these kiosks that are in Fort Tuthill that educate the public about forest health and restoration. And I do want to thank Coconino County for your continued support. Your funds are directed towards protecting our communities by reducing wildfire risk, restoring forest ecosystems, educating and informing the public, promoting facilitating small diameter wood utilization and monitoring and adaptive management. We encourage the county board and staff to participate in GFFP meetings, and we also hope to schedule a future field tour with all of you. And now I'd like to open it up for Andrew or Jay if they wanted to provide any comments, and then of course to the board as well. Thank you.
Well, I can start off with just saying that, you know, it's been a pleasure to work with Anne and just being a part of the GFFP to see how we can, you know, just promote all this and throughout the county, but you know, the one thing that's coming up is Community Wildfire Defense Grant, and she is a top-notch grant writer. And she's going to do something that I would never be able to do, which is write all these grants hopefully for us and and help us in getting some of these CWPPs updated and then moving that forward into projects over the next several years and Anne's just been a plug into this for so many years that she knows who to ask, where to ask, but she knows how to write the language that these people are looking for in these grants. So it's been a pleasure being a part of the board and, and working with GFFP.
Yeah, likewise, and I appreciate everyone's time, and just wanted to say that I think, you know, GFFP plays a very important role with respect to synthesizing and adapting current science and restoration and hazardous fuels reduction. Clearly, based off of what Anne showed you, I think there can be no doubt that in the science transfer and kind of interdisciplinary knowledge sharing role, that the grassroots structure and collaborative structure of GFFP is extremely important to getting social license and public buy-in for a lot of the work that is needed to be done in and around Flagstaff and in Northern Arizona. And so I want to echo Jay's comments in terms of being a pleasure serving on this board.
All right. Any other comments from, I guess, your board members, Anne? And thank you so much for the presentation and you know, certainly Coconino County values the partnership with GFFP and, and you know, I think from being a new board member, but from the very beginning, all I could, I heard so much about it and had to go out and check and find out what is this, and really have appreciated the partnership you have on a very big job that we all have here in Northern Arizona, and that is for doing what we can to reduce our wildfire risks and to do what we can, quite frankly, for forest restoration. And you know, I know that that's been one of our number one, Coconino County's number one priorities, and we certainly appreciate everything GFFP does with us in those efforts, getting the outreach out to the members of our community. I think, I think quite frankly, if you talk to most members of this community, they're going to tell you that the one, number one priority is forest restoration and reducing our wildfire risk. So I think that speaks volumes of your hard work and hard work we have in the county and with our other partners. So thank you so much. And with it, I'm going to turn this over to my colleagues and see if they have any questions or comments. Supervisor Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and you know, I, I will repeat similar comments that Patrice just made. And you know, Patrice sits on a lot of the forest alternate with her, but she's the one attending most of this stuff. And I like to see this progressed. I know one of our highest priority areas in the county along with what you're talking about is this, how can we get those Community Wildfire Protection Plans updated? I will note that actually Forest Lakes was part of the agreement that we had with Navajo and Apache County. And so we shared that plan. So if you didn't know that, it's out there and you might be able to draw data that they had as they took a look at the prescriptions that they were applying around Forest Lakes. So that's one to keep in mind. Would love for us to help out, figure out how we can work together with you or how we would move those forward. And, you know, I would assume, you know, a lot of it will be a fresh start, but you probably would go back a little bit and take a look at how some of them were constructed. There wasn't a consistency with each plan, depending upon who we contracted with, to those who had written it, and then where they would tap the data. They were going to ERA and gathering data over there quite a bit. So anyway, that's one, you know, I just hope we continue to work together and help each other out with. And I just appreciate it. Love this. It's stuff we need to do. And I just appreciate it. Love this. It's stuff we need to do. We need to keep educating the community. It's a big part of what I'm trying to do. It's great to see you guys. So I have to take an employment call. Excuse me.
And we need that Community Wildfire Defense Grant. We want to be on top of that. You know, we got enough information in front of the Board of Supervisors to excite us all and say, yes, we need to do this. So appreciate your partnership and moving us forward with that as well. Members of the board, other members of the board, Vice Chair Vasquez.
I just want to say thank you for all your hard work and the collaboration. It's super important. I see the picture behind Jay, the helicopter and the work on Bill Williams Mountain, and that's so important. And hopefully we can get some of the funding and and the programming to to push in the thinning on the west slopes of the peaks. We know how important it is and and how much it saves us in our community in terms of damages when the forest is thinned, if there is a forest fire rather than when it's left untreated. And so hopefully we can continue to push forward, get some of these grants that we've been told about so that we can get this work going. So thank you for your continued work.
Supervisor Brigade.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to thank everyone for doing the presentation and also doing the work, you know, aside and helping one another for partnerships and with partnership efforts. I think in anything, the things that are faced with us, we have to have some kind of partnership in place, you know, to make it to make it better or, you know, make it to improve or to even get things done. So money is for the outreach and monitoring efforts. The forest treatment and stuff like that. I'm, I'm really appreciative that, you know, we are part of that process and that we're part of the, and we're in the loop as far as, you know, making that an effort to ensure that you know, there's a a lot of things that are are done out there and being done. So I just want to say thank you for the, that everyone that's been working with with, with, with this organism, with this department. So thank you so much, Siri.
Thank you, Supervisor Bagay. Any other comments or questions from either the board or the the county? See none. I see this as a presentation and discussion only. No action. Is that correct, County Manager?
That is correct, Madam.
Very good. Well, thank you again, Ann, and for your wonderful board. Andrew and Jay, and of course, we're very, very happy that we have our representation back in Washington right now. And appreciate the hard work they're doing and the hard work you all are doing for Coconino County as well. So thank you and really appreciate the information.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity.
All right, very good. Then we are moving forward and we, as I said, we sit, switched places. So we are now on number eighteen. And that's presentation and discussion from Northern Arizona University. Regarding the Economic Policy Institute Program Funding Initiatives, including Snow Play Economic Impact Study. Economic impact of the wildfire, post wildfire flooding of the San Francisco Peaks. And the Flagstaff Hospitality Sector Economic Contribution Study. And contributions in mountain lion to Coconino County's economy. So that's a lot. And with that, County Manager, are you going to introduce this item?
Yes, and actually Siri will, but we wanted to make sure that our presenters are on the side of the of the fence. And so I see that Nancy, we've got all the presenters here. And so I'll give it back to Siri and she'll tee it up for a presentation. Thank you. Good to see you, Nancy.
Good to see you. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, members of the board. Just real quick, Nancy, are you guys able to screen share your presentation? I have it in PDF, but I don't have a PowerPoint. Or, okay, you'll be looking to do that. Great. Okay. So again, similar to the last one, we are we're excited to have a partnership update from NAU and the Economic Policy Institute on all the things you just mentioned from the agenda. So please take it away. Great. Thank you so much for inviting us to be a part of your meeting today. I am, I am new to the position of interim director of the Economic Policy Institute at the Frankie College of Business. But we're excited to give you a little insight on what this partnership has meant to the community over the last few years. The funding that Coconino County provides is really important to help subsidize a lot of studies that we do for the community. And to give you a little insight on the projects that we're currently working on for the county and a look into the future. So we're working on some really exciting things right now and first, we're going to give you a little recap on what's been going on the last few years. Without the support from the county, we couldn't do the number of studies that we do for the community. So it's, we'd like to give you a glimpse into the studies that your support has allowed us to do in the community. We do three primary things here at the Economic Policy Institute. We do economic impact studies. That is a large portion of what we do. We also do data collection and analysis and economic planning. So you can see there in the economic impact studies. We looked at the economic contribution of the Arizona Snow Bowl. On a few different levels, but Coconino County being one of them. Did an economic impact study for the Flagstaff Snow Park. That was a really important one. Where we've extended that study and are looking at snow play right now for the county. We'll talk about that here in a few minutes. Extending the season at the Grand Canyon. What that would look like in terms of economic impact and the Overland Expo Economic Impact Study. We also did some data collection for broadband. Food handlers. Coconino County Business Leaders Economic Sentiment Survey and the Andy Harvey Indigenous Youth Media Workshop Evaluation. We also helped with strategic planning for NACAG for their comprehensive study. We do an event in November of every year, COVID. Sort of, we've had a little bit of a lapse because of COVID, COVID, but this November, we will bring back the Economic Outlook Conference. Which looks at national trends in economics, but also regional and local trends as well. And a big change that we've brought about just here in the last year or so, as I moved from faculty into this administrative role. Was really bringing students and faculty into a lot of our projects. I believe in engaging students in projects that impact their local community. And so what you'll see as we go through these slides is that we have brought students in on a lot of the county projects we're currently working on. Some of the ongoing projects for fiscal year twenty-three that we're working on. These first two specifically were projects initiated by the county. So the first one is the Coconino County Snow Play Economic Impact Study. We have collected hundreds of surveys. It's been a good snow season, but I think almost two hundred surveys. From tourists in snow play areas so that we can assess how many nights they're staying, what kind of other entertainment. And food and lodging, they might be impacting in terms of economic impact. And so we've, we've almost finished compiling the surveys for this year. We have probably a few more weekends that we can do that, but then we can start putting that impact study together. The next one, and this is a big one that we've been working with Jay on, and that's the economic impact of a wildfire and post-fire flooding on the San Francisco Peaks. As you probably know, there has been some extensive engineering workups done to show what that flooding would look like. And so we are currently doing some map overlays and things like that to try and assess what kind of buildings and real estate would be impacted by not only that initial wildfire, but especially that post fire flooding. So we have started to work on that based on the data that's been given to us by, by Jay and his group. That's going to take us months. It's a, it's a huge project. It's an important project and really feeds into, you know, the prior, the prior presentation that you just heard on that need for for forest thinning and wildfire mitigation. A few other things that we're working on. Utilizing the generous support of the county is we are meeting with our Flagstaff Hospitality Sector on a monthly basis. And have have agreed to do an economic contribution study for mostly restaurateurs in the area, but also for some retail. So coming up with the economic impact of restaurants on Flagstaff, looking at it not only from a tourist perspective, perspective, but also a job perspective. We have done an initial phase one of their study. The city has contributed some money to help also with that contribution study. So it's really been a collaborative effort with the county and the city and the Economic Policy Institute. So we're working on phase two of that right now. We're working on contribution of the mountain line. We have done a previous study for them that really just focused on the the Flagstaff area. We've taken that out a little bit. To look at sort of the spillover impact on the Coconino County economy, just not the Flagstaff, the immediate Flagstaff economy, but sort of seeing how that that might trickle out into the, into the county. We have three graduate assistants and three undergraduate workers that are currently engaged on all four of these projects. Again, we think it's, it's really important to get students out there, students majoring in economics specifically, and some of our masters in business administration students out into the community to help us gather data to give us feedback, ideas. They've been really engaged in these projects and these have been really important projects for the students to work. I'm going to turn it over to Michael to talk about the snow play study.
Yeah, thank you, Nancy. My name is Michael Giannato. I'm a research associate with EPI. We'll start in the left-hand column there, the amount of surveys collected. Nancy referenced it. Just that these numbers that we came up with, we have one eighty-three, but we probably have north of two hundred. Once we get some of our surveys back from our grad assistants, we use them along with some undergraduate students to actually go out there and get these surveys. So we were trudging through the snow and talking to folks. And so that's the total is one eighty-three, but we'll probably have something north of two hundred, south of two fifty. And then I'll move on to some initial results from the survey. Eighty, eighty-seven percent are not from Flagstaff. That's not really surprising to us. And then if you skip down to that seventy-eight point two, state snow play is a primary reason for the visit. You could kind of make a case that this is a destination driver for tourism to the county. The other thing I like to point out is the household income. The snow play participation actually goes down as the income goes up. And my read into that is that snow play is actually accessible activity. So you're actually bringing people into the county. You know, a preponderance of people from a lower income level. Even when snow play is not the primary reason, other snow related activities such as skiing and snowboarding are sort of driving driving this destination. Moving to the right-hand column there, sixty-nine point seven are repeat snow play visitors. So it's a sticky market is what I would say. People who come to visit the snow, they want to do it again. Forty percent stay overnight. And so that's going to sort of bleed into some of these other categories. Nancy mentioned restaurant and bar groceries, gasoline, retail shopping. The other, the next steps would be to actually calculate the total number of people who are snow playing in the county. I don't know if you all have any idea on how to help us with that. We got some ideas about traffic counts, but maybe there's some other resources. But if we can get that total number. We can actually get an economic impact analysis of sort of what's driving using those spending categories. And put a number of the economic impact just through tourism generated through snow play. Mentioned that we're engaging with students to take, to go out and get the survey. This is improving their research skills. We just met with them prior to this meeting. And I asked them for their take on some, some things. One of our students said people are happier earlier in the day. And parking's less of an issue. The crowding and the cleanliness of the space is kind of less of an issue. As the day progresses, then that kind of deteriorates. So that was an observation. The other thing is that, that, as I mentioned, that parking and that cleanliness, there's a spot that's not on the county's snow play. Snow play map. It's at JW Pal and Sawmill. One of our research students said that he, they noticed a comment of someone saying, I really like how clean this area is. And maybe since it's not quite on the map, then maybe it's a little bit more pristine. Myself, I was, I was driving up Snowball Road Friday. Midday, they stopped me on Snowball Road and asked me if I was skiing or snowboarding. And I said skiing and I'm, I'm projecting that the reason why they stopped to ask me is because there were so many pedestrians up there looking for snow play. The rain last week kind of melted a lot of the snow and so they're sort of driving up. All to say that there is definitely kind of a lane if the county wants to wrap their arms around this to monetize snow play. If they do want to kind of reinvest in some of the parking facilities and a permit situation, I think there's definitely a lane. Once we sort of get that economic impact number. This concludes my comments on snow play.
Do we have some time to ask some questions or you want us to do it at the end?
Now, you can do it now, Madam Chair.
Well, snow play is near, near and dear to my heart and both myself and Supervisor Ryan have tried to work with a multi-jurisdictional and multi-agency group on snow play. So I have a couple of questions and Michael, sometime I'd love to sit down and maybe go in greater detail with you on this. But you know, I'm curious as to what the definition of snow play is versus, versus snow related activities. That would be my first question. I have a couple of others. So.
Yeah, for us, it's just if you're not skiing or snowboarding. So you're out there building a snowman or you're going sledding. It's just you're not, you're not skiing at Snowball.
Yeah. How about cross-country skiing or how about our snow play park that we have at Fort Tuthill? Is that included in this?
We, we were only get, we were only able to get one survey back from Snow Park and they're closed for the, but we did reach out to Snow Park.
These are really non, how you say, group activities or non destination, snow play places. Is that correct? Like no, it doesn't Snowball or the Nordic Center or our Snow Play Park.
Yeah, we kind of, we kind of utilize the map that the county has and kind of targeted those. So like Buffalo Park. I stumbled on one, I'm calling it Continental, but just off Solier, there were some people parking off the side and using that hill. And so a lot of them just saw it from the side of the road. Thor Parks, another one.
That's my other question is where are they going? I'd be very curious. I mean, we hope that you aren't talking to the folks that are stopping along I seventeen and have their children making snow, you know, man along Highway seventeen or Interstate seventeen or Highway one eighty where they're parking and, and again engaging in snow play. You know, quite frankly, in areas that, that are very, very dangerous. So in this, and I'd love to sit down and talk to you about it, is we want to do what we can as our snow play group. This multi-agency, multi-jurisdiction group. And how can we more specifically develop safe of snow play? We don't want to invite people up here as, as, as a comment I've heard that come on up, let's advertise for them to come on up so we can let you down. And we really are trying to come up with some good snow play areas and, and, and what we can do to expand our snow play opportunities. So, Michael, I'd love to, and it's probably more than we could do today. But I'd love to sit down and go through this with you more specifically.
Yeah, no problem. We can, we can continue some other time if you like.
Good, thanks. Any other questions on snow play? And and I would really love to see where they're playing, where they're going with their families to engage in snow play. I think that would be very, very important for us as a county.
So for the, all the papers that we collected are from the great snow play sites, we have a list of them. Uh we can map them out, we also have graduate uh assistants, they count to the cars. At those parking lot lot, so as a way to calculate how many people are visiting, so we can give you a uh a result from that.
That'd be very, very helpful, thank you so much, love to talk to you more on this. All right, sorry, any other questions, we'll have to move on. All right, thank you, let's go ahead and move on then.
Okay, next uh is the economic impact of wildfire and post-fire flooding. Uh as Nancy mentioned, um Jay uh reached out to us and want us to do a study on the. On impacts of the hypothetical uh wildfire and the post-fire flooding. And um a local hydrology company, G uh G E Fuller, did the modeling. And send us um just recently sent us this um two data sets. Um scenario one and four, the scenario one is the lower bounds of the risk. Which is a short duration of a storm with only the watershed above the Ford Valley burning. And you can, as you can see, it's a smaller area, and the scenario four is the upper bound of risk is a much longer um. Uh storm and much intensive storm with the burn over a a bigger area. Um so we got this uh two scenarios and then we reached out to uh the county GRS um. Um director uh Nathan Rine, and also uh he connected us with the assessor's office. So now we are in the process of uh getting the data of um um the parcel, uh the full cash value of the structure. Um including other uh information like the number of stories uh. Um and the square footage, et cetera, to help us uh to assess uh the risk of the assets value um. Asset at the risk and the the value loss. Um because of the of the flooding in the both scenarios. And next step will also uh calculate the other parts. Uh the other components of loss, including uh the revenue loss from the business and uh uh special um. Uh aspect of this is that that the area will cover the snowball, which is a big tourism attraction. Uh and also the historical downtown and uh part of the annual campus. So we also calculate uh the total impacts on those business revenue loss and also the tourism loss. Um so we are at the this uh starting stage of collecting the data and then we will continue with all the. After we get the data, we'll continue with the analysis and the calculation.
Thank you.
And the next one is um uh the hospitality group. Uh we proposed the three component study based on talking with them to learn about their needs and um their. Um the obstacles they have in running their business, so the first component we have uh finished is the. Uh economic contribution study of the restaurant and bar sector. And the second component we propose is uh to analyze their um difficulties in running their business. Uh and then the third uh third component, we want to do a a quality um. Uh hospitality industry planning for the Coconino County, so improve the um. The quality of the the tourism uh sector and the the visitors. Um the workforce and the education in that um in this sector. Um so I today I want to share about uh share with you the contribution studies, findings. Um so we did, we we do a lot of impact study, and the contribution study is a little different from the impact study. Um so the impact study is to estimate the initial change in the local economy, while the contribution is to estimate. Um the what uh existing activity in the local economy, what their um their contribution. Um so impact is how the industries in our region will respond to a change, and the contribution is how. Um this uh activity, this industry is uh is linked to the current economy. Uh and so and this is based on uh hypothetical extraction. Um for example, if we take out the restaurants and bars uh in Coconino County, what happens to the total economy of uh in Coconino? And and based on this um theory, uh we did the research and find out the restaurants and bars um. They have a direct employment, uh this is the existing data, they have a direct employment of almost three thousand, while this supports more than three thousand jobs. Um we also use accommodation sector as a benchmark to compare with the restaurant and bars to see uh what uh. What this uh what the contribution is from accommodation. And it's about one thousand in a direct employee, that's the full-time equivalent. And uh it supports a- almost fifteen hundred jobs in Flagstaff. Um uh in in terms of the in uh indirect and induced effect. Um the restaurant, the restaurant and bars uh for every dollar spent. Uh it built uh the total economy would benefit from another forty-two. Cent of the economic output, while for the accommodation for every one dollar spent. Um there will be forty-five cents that benefits from that one dollar for the accommodation. And another interesting thing that we we found is that um. Because of the inter linkage of the different industries for restaurants and bars, if we use that extraction hypothesis. Uh if that one, if this industry disappear, the most uh affected industries including are in uh include the real estate. Uh professional uh scientific and technical services, uh government enterprises and hospitals. Um and for the accommodation, uh the most affected industries included includes a real estate. A food service and drinking places, uh professional scientific and technology technological services. And governments and uh enterprises administrative and supporting services. So what's interesting i- is that uh although the. Restaurant and bars hire more people and have a bigger economic out outputs, but accommodation actually uh they uh. They, if this um industry disappear, it will affect most the restaurant and bars. Because it makes sense, because when people stay uh in hotels, uh they will have to go out and eat in the restaurant bars. So um um Coconino and Flagstaff as a a big tourism attraction. Um with all those um nice places to visit. Uh we call the restaurant bars and accommodations, these are all tourism infrastructure, and they are helping each other. Um so I think this study will help us to understand um the the tourism infra-infra-structure in uh in our county, in in our region.
Thank you very much for the information.
Uh we we didn't have a slide for the mountain line, we got the uh initial data of their expenditure, the capital improvement, their operation and their payroll. So we are sorting them out into the modeling and uh so next step we will have a report of that.
Mm-hmm, good. Very good. And thank you for this information, and and it's this kind of data that is so helpful. For us here in Coconino County to make decisions, known to inform decisions, I mean, that's what this is all about. And so we really appreciate that, appreciate your partnership and and um. I know that some of the wildfire and post-wildfire flooding has been shared, and that's going to be an important messaging. As we in Coconino County move forward with our forest restoration project, so. Again, we so appreciate our partnership with NAU um and specifically um. You know, with you all to provide us the economic outlook information that we need to be able to make our decisions and. And I'm going to talk to you about snow play, so uh that's something uh that that we really need some info. I need some further information and the county needs further information on. Uh members of the board, any comments or questions, this was excellent.
If I may.
Yes, it's Ryan.
Oh, oh, Lev Vice Chair, he's Vice Chair.
I'm gonna let you go first.
That that's why you're number two, you know. Second district.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that, I was just gonna say that the information is really helpful. I I look forward to sitting down and having some time to digest it, because it is a lot. Um but what it shows is, you know, especially in in the uh what we're just talking about with the potential forest fire. And the impact in in our community, how how grab it could be, and so. I just really appreciate looking at the at the numbers and look forward to understanding it more as as it kind of percolates and dig- digests it a little more. Um and and with the snow play, the part that I thought was interesting was that there was over twenty percent of the people that come that don't know where to go. To have snow play, and so that that to me says that we need to do more in terms of education of the community. To let them know where they can snow play and where they shouldn't snow play, so those are my comments, thank you.
And that's why I want to find out where were they snow playing? That's really important, so. Uh all right, great, any other comments, questions, members of the board?
Yeah, if I may, Madam Chair. Um you know, first and foremost, uh I I want to uh welcome you, uh. Uh Nancy, you and your team on this, uh really appreciate it. Uh you know, once upon a time when we were uh creating this uh, you know, between the city, the county, uh NAU. Part of uh our discussions at the time, as we were coming together and investing in this was uh. Uh a lot of times um investment in the state occurred because Morrison Institute uh was around. But it always had, it was skewed towards uh uh metro areas, and so. Uh for what you have been doing and your predecessors uh uh over the years, uh it's it's, it brings. This opportunity so that we can really truly have uh uh you know, data-driven uh decisions. Uh as best as possible, but a mechanism to do so uh as as we start to explore other areas uh. Uh in rural Arizona, so uh you know, I I truly appreciate uh. The relationship that we've had over the years, how it continues to be there, uh how we have the opportunity to use it and uh. And the work that that you're all doing, uh you're bringing the students into it is uh uh even worse, so is is exciting. Uh so uh I want to thank you for the presentation and uh. Uh you know, I'll see, we we always have different ideas on studies and how many can you handle on that all that idea, but uh uh thank you.
Yeah, you're you're welcome, we're we're happy to be a partner in this community. And um everybody needs data, and it's it's the one thing we we do really, really well, is is provide data and. The fact that we can train the next generation of researchers here at EPI. Um yeah, it's it's a, it's a special place and. We we want nothing more than to help our community with the data, it so desperately needs to get the the funding and the projects. Uh and the grants that it that it needs.
Absolutely. Absolutely, and uh welcome Nancy, I guess, to uh the uh Northern Arizona team and the NAU team, so. We're uh really appreciate this information and and look forward to getting the updated information that uh. You might have on on mountain line and you know, just as we move forward, uh really look forward to hearing from you. Um a- as as a lot of these studies are are proceeding, so thanks again.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Uh Supervisor Brigade.
Uh yes, I just want to thank the present, the presenters and um this presentation is very, very uh important to me. Um because when you put um economic um applied research in in areas like economic development, economic planning and. Um just uh the primary uh surveys and uh the impact studies, all sorts of impact studies, those are very important. And that as said, you know, data is very important in ensuring that um. In plan, uh proper planning and also in improving, you know, in areas that we wish to have uh to address, so. Um I just want to thank um NAU for being a part of this, I'm an alumni of NAU at College of Business. And also um very, very um glad that you know, we're we're um um. Working with you, you know, and to ensure that, you know, um that we're all getting help from your department. Um as far as the uh Coconino communities and also the Coconino County and all other uh areas that. And the departments that you're working with, so I greatly appreciate that, so thank you very much, and then. Um again, you know, um I would like to hear more about uh what uh the. The the chair is talking about, you know, we'd like to see more uh more and uh talk more about this, so it's very interesting to me, so thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, very good. So we have um and and I'm gonna thank you again for attending now our board meeting with us this afternoon, so.
Thank you so much.
As as we move forward, I know that we are just a little bit behind, not bad, and um. We have a four o'clock public hearing, is that correct, and that's a, that's a time certain.
Hmm.
So we need, we we do need to move forward, and I'm just gonna say this, Supervisor. Um Fowler and myself have missed out in our roundtable and myself in the chair's report for two. More meetings in a row, and so we are going to get there. And um the rest of the roundtable is going to be roundtable-like, I'm gonna point that out Supervisor Ryan. And um uh before we go there, I would ask, because this again, we had, we had. A roundtable heavy for federal legislative and administrative matters, but I believe that Gregory has. About five minutes that he has for updated information, so. Uh Gregory, I'm gonna turn this over to you, and would you please be uh just kind of judicious on your time on it, so thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh Supervisors, County Manager. I did distribute uh two reports earlier this afternoon or morning. Uh regarding about six bills, uh we'd like to bring to your attention for consideration and possible positions on. Um SB thirteen twelve is vehicle mileage tracking tax prohibitions. Um this bill would prohibit states and counties and political subdivisions from establishing BMT. Um it has moved on to in the House and is up for committee of the whole, and based on uh. Uh previous feedback from the board and previous positions, the staff would recommend to oppose this bill, but we would like to hear your thoughts.
Are you gonna do this for every single one of these, because we need to get this done in five minutes, so.
Madam, Madam Chair, I was gonna recommend. Yeah, if we could, Greg, they're they're all have similar intent that they want to get rid of BMT. And we see it as a tool uh for the future as a potential, so that they're all bad bills and and that goes along with where your recommendation is. And I would suggest that uh uh we would oppose all those bills that were brought up to.
I would too. You know, I'm not, I I don't know if we have to go through them individually or not, if any other. Uh but I'm gonna open this up, we do have the information, members of the board, you've all received it from Gregory. Do any of you have any questions or concerns on this? Or uh do you agree with Supervisor Ryan that uh thirteen twelve, thirteen thirteen, thirteen fourteen, ten eighteen are are all um bills that we will oppose?
I would fully agree with um Matt Ryan first and last time.
I was gonna say, did you hear that? Judy fully agrees with me.
We're we're noting with the caveat, so. Uh Supervisor Vosk, anything further, you agree?
No, I agree as well.
And I agree too as well, so with uh Matt Ryan's recommendation, anything else, Gregory?
Yes, um SB eleven hundred is an all-terrain vehicles bill that increases the weight from twenty-five hundred pounds to thirty-five hundred pounds. We're working on gauging some potential impact of this, but by increasing size, we could assume that vehicles will be bigger, faster as engines are. Uh are enlarged and could have further detriment on uh. On our forest roads, as we do receive numerous constituent uh inquiries about these vehicles in in our county, so we wanted to bring that forward. As the bill will, is scheduled for hearing tomorrow in the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee.
Supervisor Ryan, I think you have a recommendation on that.
Well, actually, it's, you know, I understand the impact, but also. Uh we usually don't get into that business unless it were uh, like it's kind of like roads, um the uh. Uh if they were exceeding the limits, and and this is, it's kind of subjective um. On in terms of restrictions associated with size of vehicle, I'd be curious to hear uh from. Uh different groups, you know, sheriff's office, others uh that that evaluate transportation components within.
We did reach out to uh Public Works, I've not heard. We did reach out to, uh, Public Works. I've not heard back from the sheriff, sheriff's office. We'll reach out to them certainly on this. Just wanted you to be aware. Um, in terms of Public Works's feedback, there, they were generally, uh, saying that this, you know, uh, would not have an intended effect because you could still bring a ten thousand pound truck out on the road type of concept. So just wanted you to be aware of that as we have, uh, heard chatter, um, about this bill, um, down in Yavapai County that it is moving forward. And there are some, uh, folks that are engaged in, on this bill, but wanted to bring it forward for informational purposes.
All right. Thank you, Gregory. Anything else?
And then finally SB sixteen ninety-four, public monies ideology, uh, prohibition. This would prohibit, uh, public entities from spending public money on diversity, equity and inclusion program. Uh, this bill was transmitted to the House yesterday. Uh, this could have potential impact on our DEI initiative in the future. And so wanted to bring that forward.
Okay. Brainer. That's a no-brainer. I don't think any board member is going to do anything other than oppose that bill.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Chair and Board Members for your time this afternoon.
Thank you for everything you and Todd do on this and keeping us informed. We really appreciate it very much. So. All right, we're going on discussion, possible action, county manager regarding possible community, regional and administrative matters. Anything you have to update us on?
At this time, Madam Chair, the manager, staff and budget and finance are meeting with departments and elected official in preparation for the budget discussions that are taking place, uh, later in April. And so first week, actually first couple of days, yesterday was our first day, very productive comments and, and conversations. I do want to credit the budget and finance staff. The material that's being put together and you will see when you get your books in April. A consistent look based on the type of information, you're going to see consistency throughout all of the departments with regard to how the information is presented. It's more visual, more, more bulleted, less text heavy, but again, uh, really do want to, uh, give kudos to budget and finance. Uh, and then we also had help from election staff because, you know, everyone has a lot of different jobs here, uh, that helped actually put the books together. So again, uh, that's the big lift right now. Uh, emergency services, uh, of course, uh, happening with the weather, uh, monitoring activities throughout the county. Uh, Oak Creek Canyon, I know, uh, Loop, Tawani Lake, Bird Springs, um, here in town, some of our county roads have been impacted just given the saturation point of all of the moisture we're receiving. And so trying to manage all of these, uh, activities that are taking place. Uh, but again, that's spring and flagstaff. So back to you, Madam Chair.
This is a doozy of a spring and flagstaff, I have to say. So, all right, very good. Uh, discussion, possible review regarding the planning calendar.
I mean, in the interest of time, I think we'll dispense of that for today, Madam Chair.
All right, very good. So we're going on to roundtable. And this is supposed to be roundtable light for everybody except myself and Supervisor Fowler. Oh, now he's leaving. So, uh, and, and I'm sorry, I'm going to take the liberties I've missed the last couple of times to provide Supervisor District One report as well as the chair's report together. And, um, I'll try to do it quickly. Obviously number one is weather, which we've just talked about and just, uh, kudos to our public works crew who are out there around the clock here trying to take care of this. And our emergency management who are working with, how, how they can to assist our, our various communities. Um, I'd like to point out that we do, the county website has listed sandbag locations, uh, for availability for uh, homes. These are not for property. These are not for outbuildings, but for homes and the locations. Not going to read to you, but they are throughout the county and they are, are much of the county and they are listed on the Coconino county website. So you may want to refer some of your communities or some of your community members to the county website on that. Uh, I have been in touch with Fort Valley in the Baderville area. As you know, uh, we are dealing with not only historic snowfall, but historic snow melt. And, um, we have had a community meeting with the flood control district a couple of days ago to discuss various mitigation measures. As you know, it's pretty flat out there. Not a lot of drainage, a lot of septic's, uh, and we've talked about how to ensure proper drainage and what to do in order to, uh, uh, make sure that your septic is draining properly there in, uh, this time of very saturated, uh, lands. Also, we provided information on, uh, wells, uh, and how to preserve and keep your wells safe and wells testing information from ADHS. Uh, there is on our county website, a, a new, um, breakout website, if you will, for ponding and give information on how to protect your homes and also how to place sandbags, the proper placement of sandbag around your homes. So, uh, we're going to continue to get that message out and continue to get that message uh, through our website and through our own social media. Um, moving on, we have DFFM funding in the amount of ten point nine million dollars is the state funding, uh, the, uh, Coconino County made a request to the state of Arizona to assist Coconino County in our, um, matching funds that we would need to apply towards our federal funding, especially, um, our, um, emergency watershed protection funds, uh, and they're approximately eleven million, twelve million dollars. We got ten point nine million dollars from DFFM, uh, and this was after our new DFFM director, Tom Torres, took over. Uh, Tom, uh, yesterday, I understand, was just approved by the state senate to be our new DFFM director. Of course, he comes from the Tonto, uh, the Tonto National Forest. He has extensive background experience in forest management, forest restoration. And I think he's going to be a very good advocate, uh, on behalf of Northern Arizona and the forested part of Arizona down there in Phoenix. So, uh, Tom, welcome. We're so glad you made it through and looking forward to working with you as our DFFM director. Um, and then just want to kind of give ongoing updates. Um, Coconino County does meet on a regular basis, a monthly basis with the Coconino National Forest and the Kaibab National Forest. We meet with the superintendents there. And we talk about how we can work together on forest restoration projects, also flood mitigation projects. And we're going to have a whole lot of that going on, especially on the Coconino with the monies that we've received, the ninety million dollars of federal funds we've received as well as the ten point nine million estate funding we've received. So, uh, this partnership and collaboration and communication is extremely important and, um, uh, really happy that we have super, uh, intendants from both the Coconino and the Kaibab that look to us and work with us as active partners. And with that, we want to welcome Aaron Mayfield, who is the new Coconino, um, um, super inten- or, uh, superintendent. And, uh, he will hopefully be, uh, invited to a, one of our upcoming board meetings so that we can all meet him and he can address the board and the public. And, uh, we really look forward to getting to know him better, working with him, um, as we move forward. In that, the city and the county continue to also meet on a monthly basis and talk about ongoing city-county issues. One of them that we're going to be talking about a little bit this evening is the short-term rental. And it's a way for the city and the county to keep the city of Flagstaff and Coconino County. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. Uh, to keep together and to keep up with each other's, uh, issues that really do, um, uh, pertain to city matters and county matters. So we can try to keep up together, uh, as we move forward and, and hopefully help to benefit our community. Um, snow play. We talked a little about that. We had our fourth snow play meeting, our last meeting of the year because, uh, spring had sprung, although I don't think spring sprung too much. And I am looking forward to continuing this multi-agency, multi-jurisdiction group as we start looking, believe it or not, for the twenty twenty-four snow play season. And to really look at the possibility of expanding snow play opportunities across Coconino County. Um, and that's why I was so interested in getting more information from NAU on their economic analysis of it. Um, Metro Plan, I know you got an update from the, uh, Chair now of Metro Plan. Um, Vice Chair, Hirammo Vasquez. And, oh, no, your vice chair still, but you're now on, um, you, you've taken over, um, RTI, correct? And, uh, we do have a new director for Metro Plan, Kate Morley. Many of us know Kate from, uh, Mountain Line and I know we'll all, uh, welcome her as picking up the reins at least in the interim, um, up, uh, for Metro Plan. Although she has applied in uh, for the full directorship and, and that decision will be made here fairly soon. Uh, just an update on WIR, uh, we are proceeding with the National Center for Public Lands. As you know, Coconino County, the Board of Supervisors approved of funding for that. And we are working now with the rest of the fifteen western states, um, to hopefully get that national center up and running. I was also asked to be part of a subcommittee on post wildfire mitigation through the WIR. I'll keep you informed as that proceeds. Um, and certainly look forward to working with the other states as they, uh, take a look at post wildfire mitigation efforts. And then, um, moving forward, I said I would mention, I met with my Parks and Recreation Commissioners today. And they pointed out that there are vacancies on the Parks and Recreation Commission. For those of you who have vacancies within your district, I'm going to highly recommend that you, uh, try to look across and see if we can get those filled. It makes everybody's job easier and really is important for us to get input on our commissions from all across, uh, Coconino County. And then Elections had an E-qualify meeting. And this is for members of the public and also for the board. Um, Coconino County is now able to be part of E-qualify. That's the first time Coconino County has been able to do that. And it allows, uh, those who are running for elected office within the Coconino County, both constitutional officers and the Board of Supervisors to utilize this process of E-qualify to get your petition signatures. So, uh, the Elections Department provided information across, uh, Coconino County and offered to our community, uh, some training on the whole E-qualify program. So a big thank you to Elections on that. Stan Pierce and others, I know, were actively involved and, uh, want to, uh, just, uh, make sure the information gets out to members of our public. And then last but not least, Senator Sinema, uh, has also started a new rural development working group in which she has been meeting, uh, with, uh, rural parts of Arizona, uh, to basically get input from local county and city governments in rural Arizona. And, uh, was able to sit and take part in, uh, some of those meetings. And I know you all probably will be getting some invites uh, to join, uh, uh, this and to join our colleagues all across, uh, rural Arizona and give our input to Senator Sinema and to others. So that is my very quick update that I have missed. And hopefully it's, um, uh, provides some important information to District One and also to Coconino County. So next, I am going to go now to roundtable light, uh, District Two Supervisor Vasquez.
Hi, everyone. Uh, it was spring break and I was part, sick for part of the time, so haven't been do- doing much. Um, did have, uh, a couple of meetings here and there with, with some of my Parks and Rec Commission, talking about, uh, future cases coming up and, and just, uh, really preparing and looking at, as was mentioned earlier, the different commissions and seeing how we can fill some of those spots. Also talking about, uh, with some folks about the, um, the regional plan and finding some nominees for the regional plan. And, uh, that was about it over the, since the last meeting. So I went heavy last time, so I'll go super light this time.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you, Vice Chair. So, um, uh, District Three Supervisor Matt Ryan.
I, I thought you were going to hold me out to last.
No filibustering, no, okay?
Yeah, actually just, uh, light, uh, would be, uh, and you had noted it, uh, uh, the, uh, point associated with, uh, ponding. We've had so much snow. It's just such a unique year. Typically when people have sheet flow across their property, it, it's their responsibility and, and it still is, uh, but by having the sandbags available and taking a look at, uh, uh, this additional ponding that we don't typically see, uh, uh, emergency services and others, uh, fire departments, et cetera, uh, uh, in the area, uh, have been helpful, uh, at least knowing where to get sandbags and how to construct them. So, uh, that's important. It, it's come up in, uh, uh, multiple communities in District Three. Uh, the other pieces, just last week, uh, on the legislative side, uh, I was able to meet, uh, with the, uh, uh, House Speaker, uh, Toma and, uh, uh, President, uh, Peterson from the Senate, uh, to bring forth, uh, our priorities associated with the, uh, 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 what is it? The state, uh, uh, funding, uh, the ten point, uh, nine million dollars that we need, uh, to help to affect, uh, the projects that we're working on in the areas, uh, as well as the, um, uh, our tech bill, uh, that, uh, we have our two crossings, the one eighty crossing and the eighty-nine crossing a government tank, uh, in that bill, as well as multiple communities throughout Coconino County, uh, and other, uh, counties in the region. So, uh, you know, there were key points, uh, as far as getting, um, money for, um, uh, the, um, uh, what do we call it? Unqualified? I can't think of the word we're using, but basically, uh, funds that don't qualify, uh, uh, it's, it's kind of hard to get an appropriation at this time in the game, uh, for that kind of thing. So that's, uh, a quickie on that. And, uh, uh, actually just, uh, like being back with everybody. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks Supervisor Ryan. Now Supervisor Bagay.
Uh, yes, um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, basically what, um, has, I've attended, um, at least three, uh, meetings here. And I think, um, I'll go ahead and the, the last one time I did a um, a lot of, uh, um, updates. But, um, the night we attended, I attended in the Women's, uh, Navajo Women Veterans Meeting yesterday at Twin Arrows. And, um, they honored, um, the late Sergeant Lillian Luhan, who's from Coal Mine Mesa. And, uh, she passed, uh, about two weeks ago at, at age a hundred and four. She was the first Navajo woman to enlist in the, in the army. And, um, her daughter lives here in town and was a teacher at the Tubushee Public School. And her name was, uh, her name is, uh, Marilyn Exity. So they focused around her, you know, as far as, you know, how they went about their presentation. So there was a lot of good information, um, the, it's how they talked about how the impacts of military life and habits, uh, that they still carry as of today, af- upon their return. And then also, um, uh, just honoring, you know, all the, um, attendees. And I think this is the first and, um, they, they also had the postal colors by the, the, uh, the, the now, the hope that the women veterans. Um, so it was a, a real, real nice event and basically talking about, um, the history of Navajo women veterans, uh, when it came up, when, when it came about. And to this day, you know, there are a lot of, um, 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 uh, women that are in the armed forces now. So it was a real, real good, um, meeting yesterday and um, I felt was something that, you know, had, is, has a good chance of, you know, getting bigger and a better, you know, as far as, uh, getting, um, uh, more women, um, acknowledged, you know, for their services. And so that's, that's what, uh, uh, happened. The other one is that, um, um, Division of Social Services Director, Thomas Cody, had a meeting also and, uh, he did outreach, community outreach, um, uh, a meeting for, for all the social services. And they talked about the type of assistances that the social services has for our communities out there. And then, um, like low-income energy, home energy assistant programs, low-income household water assistant programs, community service block grants, Navajo school clothing supplies, burial assistance and general assistance. And they went through those, um. And, um, so they also have foster care for families and how to qualify and, um, how to, you know, help the people that the kids out there, that, you know, uh, with their relatives or whatever. So that was, those are the main two that I wanted to bring up. The last one I want to bring up is the flooding. Bird Springs, uh, Loop and Talani Lake have been flooded out. And, um, the, 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 the main line, water line, um, was underneath the, the, uh, bridge there in Loop and it, it broke. And that was taking water to Talani Lake and also to, um, Bird Springs. So, um, as of this morning. So as of this morning, about seven, we started in phone calls because we were asked, you know, for, for advocacy and stuff like that. So, but the, the water line was pretty much done above the bridge there in Loop. But then this morning they had some issues with it again, where it broke in one area again. So that's, that, that's, so they're supposed to have fixed it today, hopefully. You know, the water comes back on for the families, but there's a lot of people involved like like the Merus Food Bank and the NTUA, Navajo Housing Authority. And of course, you know, we did our advocacy and so today they had a lot of water that was picked up and it was delivered, you know, by various and various organizations. And so we're happy that, you know, that they've been without water for two days now, going on the third day today. So I just want to say that, you know, we're not sure how the, the water line is as of right now. But an update was that they had checked it again this morning and part of it broke off again. So I could, and with all the water that's coming down is probably going to affect Cameron, Cameron residents also is from what we're hearing. Because Cameron has their water tanks down in the, in the Little Colorado River too. So hopefully that doesn't happen because those, those tanks could be washed down, you know, and then there's going to be no water for the families there in Cameron area and the school and Gray Mountain areas. So that's happening over there. So we've been really involved, you know, just advocating and trying to see and help people in certain areas. So I just want to say thank you for all the people that have, you know, really helped with either the whole Coconino County in the areas of, you know, providing supplies and then also helping out with flooding initiatives, you know, to curtail, you know, the floodings and even the fires that were happening here in Coconino County. So that's just an addition that I wanted to add off my last week's meeting. The last update that I had, so, and then there was a Western Apple Agency Council meeting that the staff attended or our office attended and we're still continuing to attend planning and also chapter meetings with the chapters that we serve. So a lot of good information, a lot of, you know, information is being shared and then also giving them some kind of advice, you know, just to follow, you know, certain areas, you know, what can be done, what can't be done and things like that. So, so that's, that's where we're at and so thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Baguette. And of course, you know, we certainly are concerned about those in the Bird Springs and Talani Lake area. And it's, it's been a hard spring, many parts of our community. So thanks all you're doing, for all you're doing out there. Really appreciate that. All right, we are real now, we're almost just a couple of minutes late for a hearing, public hearing, and I've asked the if, if we can take a five minute break or if we should open up the hearing and then take our break.
I don't know how to respond.
Madam Chair, I think if we go ahead and take a break, we'll be okay.
All right, then let's go ahead and take a five minute break. We'll be right back for our public hearing. Thank you so much.
Just a reminder to mute.
Nate and Christopher, if you can please accept the promotion to panelist. There we go.
There we go. Thanks Lindsay.
Members of the board, once you're back, would you put on your camera so we can see that you're with us? And we're about ready to start this public hearing. The Vice Chair is back. Supervisor Ryan is back. Waiting for Supervisor Baguette. Are we waiting for Matt? Yep. Thank you Supervisor Baguette. And do we have everybody that we need from the county?
Yes, we're ready.
All right, this is four o'clock. In fact, it's a little after four, four ten. It's the time we have scheduled for a public hearing. Just for the record and because this is a public hearing, I'm going to note that I'm going to call the supervisory districts to make sure who's here. Patrice Horstman, District One, present. District Two. Supervisor Baguette?
Here.
District Three. Oh, I'm so sorry. District Two. District Three is here. District Two, Vice Chair Vasquez.
I'm here as well. Thank you.
All right, District Four Supervisor Ryan.
Well, I'll go ahead and stay in District Three. I'll let Judy keep District Four, but, but I am present, Madam Chair.
And I'm just, I'm going all the way, all over. We have District One, District Two, District Three and District Four, who are present for this hearing? Even if I can't call it right, District Five is not present, Supervisor Fowler is not with us. So with that, we are going forward. This is a public hearing on item number twenty-four. Consideration of Possible Action to Adopt Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-three dash zero one, an ordinance of Coconino County, Arizona Board of Supervisors, superseding Resolution Twenty Nineteen dash thirty-eight and providing authority for establishing and rescinding designated trucking routes, routing and restrictions over the public roads, highways, streets and bridges under county jurisdiction. And this is listed as Public Works Director Christopher Trussler, and Assistant County Engineer Nathan Riesner, who will present on this item. Is that correct, County Manager?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
All right, very good. With that, I'm going to turn this over to our Public Works Director, Christopher Trussler. Thanks for being with us this afternoon, Christopher.
Thank you, Chair Horstman. So by way of introduction of this new ordinance, and it's somewhat of a revision of an existing ordinance. Currently, we have an ordinance that limits truck traffic based upon the capacity of the roadway infrastructure. It's our, our culverts and our bridges are engineered and designed to handle only a certain capacity, a certain weight vehicle. And frankly, that system has worked fairly well. We want to update this ordinance to include two stretches of road that we would like to limit heavy truck traffic. And when I say heavy truck traffic, it's any vehicle that's above twenty-six thousand pounds. As we've seen, construction and congestion happen within the Flagstaff area and on I forty, we've seen truck traffic start to route through the Doni Park neighborhoods. It's created a safety issue where these big heavy semi trucks are routing through Coke Field Road and Silver Saddle Road. And so we worked with the Arizona Trucking Association, who represents a large number of these commercial truck drivers and their operations to, to ensure that we're in agreement with our ordinance. And so with their, we met a couple of times with them and they're, they are in agreement with this ordinance. And basically, we're revising the existing ordinance to put weight limit restrictions. We're, we're creating truck traffic designated areas, which would be, we would like the trucks to stay on Townsend Wyona and not be accessing Coke Field Road or Silver Saddle Road. So we've evaluated the route, we've evaluated the need for traffic and the deliveries. We still want to support heavy truck traffic. They're a vital part of delivering goods. I think it's, it's almost a buzzword now when we hear supply chain issues. And we, we don't want to limit and create supply chain issues. But the ordinance that, as it's revised now, supports the trucking industry and it also supports the county and Public Works in wanting to preserve the residential nature of Coke Field Road and Silver Saddle Road and preserve the, the safety in those roadways. That's all I have by way of introduction.
Thanks, Christopher. And members of the board, before we turn and open this for a public hearing, I'm going to ask if the board has any comments or questions on this before we open this up for public hearing.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Supervisor Baguette.
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm really glad that this is being put in place because we, for District Four, we've been getting a lot of calls in our office regarding this issue here. So I just want to thank Chris and others that have worked on this, you know, hopefully at the end, you know, we would be able to make the recommendation and to, to, to ensure that, you know, we're that this, this is kind of addressed for people that live in there. And then, and so thank you so much.
Thank you Supervisor Baguette. Any other comments or questions before we open this up for public hearing? Supervisor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And actually, I appreciate the, the update associated with it. You know, the ordinance, the intent is to protect our infrastructure. And so I really appreciate the work that's been done on this, as well as, you know, looking at the other routes and what the capacities were for those routes. The question would be, once we implement the ordinance, how prepared are you for signage to be able to help out with this?
Christopher?
Yeah, Chair Horstman and Supervisor Ryan. Yeah, we, we will update the signage and install some new signs to, to inform the, the truck traffic, the commercial traffic. And then we've also been working with the Sheriff's Office to ensure that we're not creating something that, in a, in a sense, is not enforceable. And so that coordination is ongoing with the Sheriff's Office. And frankly, with the amount of snow that we've got and the damage to the signs in our right of way, we're going to be replacing a lot of signs this spring and into the summer. And so, and we're, we're adding this to the list and we'll be coming to the board to ask for a budget increase for our sign shop, for a lot of the guard rail and signs that, that have been damaged. But yes, this is an undertaking and there is an information campaign that we're undertaking as well to inform the, the public and the commercial drivers.
I, I didn't see any of the damaged signs. There's too much snow out there. So, yeah. Yeah, actually I knew that, by the way, you guys did a good job in Belmont. Yeah, no matter what people are saying on their site. In terms of the, and the reason I'm asking this is, as you would know, if we are trying to divert these trucks that they, you know, they can see the restrictions before they hop off Townsend Wyona, you know, it makes sense to have that in place. So, no, I really appreciate the ordinance. I love it that you guys are updating it. It protects our infrastructure, but it also provides guidance for trucks that might be oversized into where they may or may not go. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sure, County Manager.
I do have a question related to, in the instances where I forty is shut down and that typically happens, where trucks will then cut across Cosnino and then work through up Townsend Wyona. So, so how, I mean, we could all see in case of an emergency, kind of all things are kind of off just because of the emergency. How then do we coordinate with, with DPS? So that, you know, we can put the word out that as a result of I forty being shut down, there is really no other choice, no other options. And so we do want to kind of get in front of those things with regard to expectations. Because I think that's when we really see a lot of the volume on Townsend Wyona is during that time and when we do have interruptions in, in I forty coming through town.
And Chair Horstman and County Manager approve, we do prioritize Townsend Wyona as far as snow plowing and keeping that clear in case I forty is shut down, so that in a sense, there's that relief out. This ordinance, though, does not restrict traffic on Townsend Wyona. So that will remain the thoroughfare and the backup, the route for them. The only places that we're restricting are Coke Field Road and Silver Saddle. So they'll still be able to come off Cosnino or take the earlier exit at the end of Townsend Wyona and come north up Townsend Wyona and then get on eighty-nine or come into Flagstaff that way.
And that'll be an important part of the messaging because I think when we look at the, the area out there and I live in that area, the expectation, well, is the ordinance, does it extend over to Townsend Wyona? You just answered that, but again, I would clarify that with public information will be important. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, County Manager. Any other questions or comments before we open this up to a public hearing? Seeing none, and, um, um, members of the community, now is the time for you to be heard on this adoption of ordinance number twenty-two-three dash zero-one, uh, which would supersede ordinance twenty-nineteen dash thirty-eight and providing authority for establishing and rescinding designated trucking routing and restrictions over public roads, highways, streets, and bridges under county jurisdiction. Specifically, members of the public, you've heard that the, uh, they are looking to, um, uh, uh, restrict to, uh, any kind of truck traffic, I'm sorry, heavy truck traffic on Coke Field Road and Silver Saddle Road. Uh, and now, members of the public, is your time to be heard on this proposed ordinance. And so with that, I'm going to turn this over to the clerk, so she can explain how you can join us here at our public hearing.
Thank you, Chair Horstman. At this time, if anyone would like to make a comment during this public hearing, you can hit the raise hand icon that will appear if you hover towards the bottom of your screen. It looks like a hand, if you click on that, that will raise your hand and notify us, um, that you'd like to speak. If you've joined by telephone, you can hit star nine and that will raise your hand and notify us that you would like to speak.
Members of the public, now is the time.
We have no hands raised.
All right, this is a last call, members of the public, to be heard on the proposed ordinance.
And there are still no hands raised.
Very good.
Chair, Chair Horstman, uh, can I ask a quick question of Lindsay? Lindsay, the Arizona Trucking Association, uh, was interested in, and maybe participating. And we, I gave them this time for this meeting. And so I just wanted to invite them, if they're on or if they made it, that this would be the appropriate time for them to comment as well.
Do you know anyone's name from, from the association that maybe joined?
Oh, Nate.
Actually, I don't see anyone that's outside our organization that's on, yeah.
I didn't see anybody.
They did such a, such a good job that they did, they, they're happy, yeah.
I did also check our board comments email, in case we got anything, we have, we haven't received any emails regarding it either.
So with that, uh, and we have called, uh, members of the public to join us two times now. Uh, and, uh, we are now going to close the public hearing portion of this. And I am now going to turn back to my board members to see if they have any questions, concerns, or comments regarding the new ordinance number twenty-two-three zero-one. Uh, members of, uh, the board, uh, supervisor Ryan?
Madam, madam chair, uh, I, I already made my comments, uh, is associated with this, uh, it's, it's predominantly, uh, in district four, I would defer motions, uh, and, and, and we, we have, uh, uh, our vice chair that sits on all those transportation committees too, so.
Look, so what happens then if it's between supervisor Baguette and vice chair Vasquez, what am I going to do, flip a coin?
Madam chair, that's why you're in that top position.
All right, supervisor Baguette, I know this is in your district, and, and you have made some comments, anything else that you'd like to say?
Um, no, I don't, but, um, I think, you know, it, like I said, I fully support this ordinance and I really wanted to go forward and, uh, because I would, I've been talking to, uh, several of the people that live in the area and they're really asking for, um, us to do more signages or is there a way we can, uh, have them use another route instead of here? Cause there's those kids that are walking home from school or riding bus, uh, bikes and stuff like that. So I'm really, really thankful, you know, that this has, is coming forth and, um, I will, uh, one hundred percent, you know, um, support this, uh, ordinance, you know, all the way through, thank you.
Thank you, and vice chair Vasquez, any comments you'd like to make?
Just that I support the ordinance as well and look forward to seeing its implementation and seeing the new signs out there.
Very good, and then I'll just make a comment for the public record as well. Uh, I appreciate you bringing this forward. Uh, Christopher, you and your staff, I think it not only protects the infrastructure, but as pointed out by supervisor Baguette, it really protects the neighborhoods. Um, and I like the idea of getting the signage out and the clear communication to, um, members of the public on, um, on this. So thank you, Christopher and staff. Um, with that, I would entertain a motion, and this is in district four. So supervisor Baguette, would you like to make a motion on, uh, the adoption of this ordinance?
You're muted.
Super, uh, supervisor Baguette, I'm sorry, you're muted.
Scratch the head.
Head, he just cracked your head.
I tried to give it to him.
Okay, okay, here goes, I mo, I, I motioned that we adopt ordinance number twenty-two-three dash zero-one and ordinance of Coconino County, Arizona Board of Supervisors superseding resolution number two thousand nineteen dash thirty-eight and providing authority for establishing and rescinding designated trucking routes and restrictions over public roads, highways, streets, and bridges under the county's jurisdiction.
Very good, we do have a motion from supervisor Gay, do I have a second from vice chair Vasquez?
Thinking.
We have a second from vice chair Vasquez, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number twenty-two-three dash zero-one, please signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Very good, so, and I'm sure we'll be getting the information out on our county website too for the new ordinance, so thank you very much, thanks for all your work, Christopher, on this. All right, now, we're taking a break. Uh, we have a break until six o'clock. Um, and unless anybody has anything else they want to say, uh, go ahead and enjoy the snow and get a little shoveling done, I guess, so.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you, we'll, we'll be back at six o'clock.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Thank you.
Say Steve.
Yes.
I know it's the special session continued so. Once again, I don't think we need to do the pledge of allegiance or call to the public again, do we?
No, because you're still part of the original meeting you convened.
That that's kind of what I thought too. Okay. Thank you.
I'm here, but I have to go grab some, so be right back.
It is wet outside.
Yeah, I know. I was thinking I should snow blow before the cold air comes in and freezes all up. But you know, I already did that. I'm tired.
We don't have any snow out here in Doney Park. We just have mud.
Oh, wet. And I'm not even sure the snow blow is going to work because.
Yeah, it's too wet. It does probably.
That's what your pads for. Put a pad on it.
That's what what?
That's what you know, pad for spraying in your dishes.
That's right, yeah. On snow shovels too.
It doesn't work perfectly, but it helps. Yeah.
I never have used a snow blower, so that's interesting.
Yeah, you could bring your shovel in and cook up eggs too.
We lived in town and I had a snow blower one Sunday morning. I was out blowing the snow. And I forgot we get the Sunday paper delivered, you know, thrown in our side. Well, just as I thought, oh no, Daily Sun. It was like shredded and pushed out. And then I thought, then I forgot we got the Republic too, the Sunday edition. It hit that Sunday edition and just clogged up.
Sprouted and throw up cheer pin.
Yeah, you would think it would.
Yeah. I threw my very first cheer pin today earlier today.
Wow.
For the whole season. Yeah.
That's the worst.
So Supervisor Bigay, is she still in the office?
Uh, no, she was bolting to, but she's going to be joining us remotely.
She she went off the hotel.
How are you doing, Monique?
Oh, pretty good. Pretty good. Yesterday was my birthday. I worked a lot of hours.
Happy birthday.
But I celebrated on Sunday and depending on how long tonight goes, my Tuesday track group is going to have a little birthday celebration for me, so. I have on running clothes underneath my lawyer clothes.
Monique, no pressure for us, right? No pressure to get over this soon.
The track workout starts at 6:15 and it's a 10 minute drive, so you guys got five minutes.
You're down in Phoenix, so you aren't getting the snow.
It's been raining all day, so yeah, there's it's it's pretty wet out there.
When you said you had your running clothes, I go, well.
So. Yeah, I am coming up on Friday. It just seems like whenever I schedule a midweek trip, it snows, so I just need to stop scheduling midweek trips.
It's a birthday week for you, right?
Supervisor Bigay, can you test your mic? Supervisor Bigay is joining us by telephone.
Hello.
Yes, Supervisor Bigay, can you hear us?
Okay.
Good.
Sound and clear.
Happy birthday, Monique.
So we have, oh, it's six o'clock. I was gonna say another minute, but my my watch says six. So it looks like we have all four board members back with us. We have Vice Chair Vasquez, we have Supervisor Ryan, Supervisor Bigay, and myself, Patrice Horstman. Lena Fowler is not able to join us tonight, so there's four board members. We obviously have a quorum and we can continue on our special session. And before us, we have one item as a discussion of possible action. This is consideration and possible action to approve ordinance 2023-04. Approving the short term rental ordinance. And I I see we have Community Development Director Jay Chris Men will present. And and Jay just kind of give us the update on what we're what.
Say Steve?
Yes.
I know it's the special session continued, so. Once again, I don't think we need to do the pledge of allegiance or call to the public again, do we?
No, because you're still part of the original meeting you convened.
That that's kind of what I thought too. Okay. Thank you.
I'm here, but I have to go grab some, so. Be right back.
It is wet outside.
Yeah. I know I was thinking I should snow blow before the cold air comes in and freezes all up. But you know, I already did that. I'm tired.
We don't have any snow out here in Doney Park. We just have. Mud.
No.
Yeah. How wet? You know, I'm not even sure the snow blow is going to work because.
Yeah. Yeah, too wet. It does probably.
That's what your pants for. Put pant on it.
That's what what?
That's what, you know, pant for spraying in your dishes.
That's right, yeah. On on snow shovels too.
It doesn't work perfectly, but it helps. Yeah.
I I never have used a snow blower, so that's interesting.
Hey, you could bring your shovel in and cook up eggs too.
We lived in town and I had a snow blower one Sunday morning. I was out. Blowing the snow. And I forgot we get the Sunday paper delivered, you know, thrown in our side. Well, just as I thought. Oh, no, Daily Sun. It was like shredded and pushed out. And then I thought, then I forgot we got the day of the republic too, the Sunday edition. It hit that Sunday edition and just clogged up.
Sorry, you didn't throw up cheerpin.
Yeah, you would think it would.
Yeah. But yeah, I I threw my very first cheerpin today earlier today.
Wow.
For the whole season. Yeah.
That's the worst. Hey, Monique.
So supervisor, but gay, she's still in the office?
Uh, no, she was bolting to, uh, but she's going to be joining us remotely.
She she went off the hotel.
Yeah, to check him. How are you doing, Monique?
Oh, pretty good, pretty good. Yesterday was my birthday. I worked a lot of hours. But I celebrated on.
Happy birthday.
But I celebrated on Sunday and depending on how long tonight goes, my Tuesday track group is going to have a little birthday celebration for me, so. I I have. I have on running clothes underneath my lawyer clothes.
That case.
Monique, no pressure for us, right? No pressure to get over this soon.
The track workout starts at six fifteen and it's a ten minute drive, so you guys got five minutes.
We'll see what we can do.
You're down. You're down in Phoenix, so you aren't getting the snow.
Uh, it's been raining all day, so yeah, there's it's it's pretty wet um out there.
When you said you had your running clothes, I go, well. So.
Yeah, I am coming up on Friday. It just seems like whenever I schedule a midweek trip, it snows, so I just need to stop scheduling midweek trips.
It's a birthday week for you, right?
As he's. Supervisor big A, can you test your mic? Supervisor big A is joining us by telephone.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Supervisor big A, can you hear us?
Okay. Yes.
Good.
Out and clear. Bye bye.
Happy birthday, Monique.
So we have. But oh, it's six o'clock. I was gonna say another minute, but my. My watch says six. So it looks like we have uh all four board members back with us. Uh, we have vice chair Vasquez. We have a. Supervisor Ryan, supervisor big A and myself, Patrice Horstman. Uh, Lena Fowler is not able to join us tonight, so there's four board members. We obviously have a quorum and we can continue on our special session. Uh, and before us. Uh, we have one item as the discussion impossible action. Uh, this is consideration and possible action. To approve ordinance twenty twenty three zero four. Approving the short term rental ordinance. And um I I see we have community development director Jay. Chris Men will present and and Jay uh just kind of give us the. Update on what we're what how we're here. And what we're doing here. I don't think we you've already taken us through, obviously. Uh, the PowerPoints, et cetera. And then I I have a couple of statements I'd like to make as well. So Jay, um, I'm going to go ahead and let you just explain to the public. Um, that this is our continuation of our earlier hearing. And where we are here tonight.
Uh, Madam Chair, thank you for that. Uh, good evening, supervisors, Jake Crystal, the community of all Matt. Uh, um, so right about a month ago, uh, the board supervisors did host a public hearing. To hear public comment regarding. Proposed short term rental ordinance. After over two hours of public comments. The board did close the public hearing. And after some deliberation, um, directed staff, both community development department, as well as the county attorney's office. To analyze that public comment. Against what our ordinance was drafted at at the time and also against what the limitations of state statute allow for. Uh, so if we are currently, we being community development and the attorney's office are currently still working on a draft. Analyzing those elements that we did hear from the public and the board supervisors. And it is my understanding that the board supervisors may decide to continue this item uh one more time. Uh, to get an opportunity to finish that draft and share what we have found with the board. And with that, I'm happy to turn it over uh to the chair.
Yeah, thanks, Jane. Thanks for the update and and uh. I hope the board doesn't mind. I'd like to make just a couple of comments and then see uh get some input from the board as well. And as Jay indicated, uh, we did about a month ago, uh, take a look at this and we did, of course, have a uh. Uh, hearing we heard from so many community members. We want to thank our community members. Who really came forward. We received more than fifty written responses on the proposed ordinance. We had all over twenty people who appeared in person and provided information and comments to our ordinance. Uh, and we really appreciated the fact that so many people in our community recognize that state statute. Really requires a really limits municipalities on what we can. And what we cannot do uh with regards to short term rentals. Um, and we talked about what. The law, the new changes to the law do allow us to do in terms of registering short term rentals. Uh, and notifying neighbors that this is a short term rental. Uh, contacting, have a contact person for complaints, uh, if there are problems with a short term rental. Allowing for an escalating fines for violation. To allow for an administrator review or for due process. And that's the good news, and that's uh certainly one of the things that we were trying to do with our ordinance. But they also, there were concerns that were raised. In terms of. The lack of definition and the lack of really setting forth. What a county or municipality can and cannot do. And what they can and cannot regulate. They didn't really provide us a a definition for what is a verified violation. Um, and there were a lot of other uncertainties with regards to the statute. Um. We also, as a board, wanted to devise an administrative review or a due process procedure. That was more of a expedited procedure. Something that would be a meaningful enforcement tool. And if it was going to take too long, of course, it wasn't really going to be a meaningful enforcement tool. So given the fact that the statutory language is very, very problematic. Uh, as it stands. And given the issues that were raised by members of our community and and quite frankly, also raised by members of the board. And and even raised by our our legal consuls. Um, we really need as a, in my opinion, as a board. To to go back to the drawing board, if you will, at least take another look at this. Um, I would like us also to note that the city of Flagstaff. Who, of course, they're going to do their own thing, but we want to have them somewhat. Uh, complimentary are also in the process of the short term rental ordinance. So rather than trying to push something through. That really may not serve the needs of Coconino County to the to the degree we would like them to be served. I I believe that it would be appropriate at this time. For the board to basically bring this back to legal. Uh, with some further guidelines, much as I stated and others stated during the hearing. Uh, and see what we can and cannot do more specifically, what's covered and what's not covered. Provide a greater definitional section and provide a more expedited due process. And as we've been advised, those are substantial changes to the ordinance that we have presented to the public. And because of that, we are required then to open up this hearing for further review. Because of these substantial changes and we'd want to do that anyway. Because we want to make sure that whatever we formulate as a board, it reflects. Input and reflects um the comments and concerns that have been raised by uh our citizens and constituents. Here in Coconino County. So what I'd like us to do is to pause, take a breath. Send this back to legal and to work. In conjunction with other municipalities, in this case, City of Flag, but I know there are other municipalities in the county that are looking at this. Continue our hearing. And give a updated version of the ordinance. And and place that on our our website, get that out to the public. Continue our open hearing and at that time, consider some modifications to this ordinance and to consider. A a is probably substantially changed ordinance to make sure that we've got. The highest and best ordinance we can, given the limitations of the law as presented. So I I'm going to recommend to the board. At this time that uh we continue. Uh, the hearing on our short term rental ordinance. And that we send this back to legal and to our staff for further review and consideration and amendment. Um, and that would be my recommendation, but I'd love to hear from other board members. Matt.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and I unfortunately, I was not able to attend the hearing I had already scheduled to be away. Uh, and and yet I've had an opportunity to uh. Uh, delve into uh what transpired during the hearing. Uh, and. Uh, just a a few pieces to add to what you have said. Um, is um. Uh, while we can't meet everybody's expectations, uh, and we won't, uh, people want it to be a lot more than. What we have the statutory authority to do. Uh, you know, I go back to when I was when I was considering even doing this job way back when. I went out and I visited with Karen English, who had been a county supervisor, had been a legislator, had moved on to Congress. And said, uh, Karen, what what advice would you give me? You know, just asking our general age, does that? You know, you, the thing that I learned through my career is you don't always have to rush things. Uh, and it helps to pause uh. And and see, you know, consider other points that we may not have considered. It's like writing a lesson plan for. Uh, students, uh, around who can relate to this, I'm sure, is uh. You write a lesson plan and within five minutes you realize your lesson plan didn't work or it needed refinement and so. Uh, and that's how things are. Uh, uh, we we adapt, we modify and see what we can do and. And try and prove improve what we have. I will note, uh, not only City of Flagstaff, but City. Of Williams already has an ordinance, uh, City of Sedona has been working on it, uh, Lego Cities and Towns, uh. Uh, there there are other versions of what's out there and how people have structured them. So it it provides um. Uh, just. Uh, additional areas to explore for uh conceptually. Uh, a good idea. It's uh it's not to be uh. Controlled by an individual. It's one to be shared. And so if we have that chance, uh, it's well with worth it. Uh, for the sake of uh the efforts that have gone in, I truly appreciate the work that everybody's done. Uh, and and for the sake of our communities, uh. Uh, I think we should, we owe it to you to try to. Uh, put together best ordinance based on what we have. The capability of doing. Uh, it made uh for the sake of summertime communities, if we do this, um. It's uh. It it will delay, uh. But let's get it right, uh, and. Uh, and go through the appropriate procedure. Uh, because it's an ordinance, as I understand, I think we have a sixty day publishing requirement. Uh, something like that. Uh, we need to do it correctly and it it does give people additional chance to. Uh, see what we're we're proposing associated with that. So, uh. Those are my thoughts, Madam Chair. So I I concur. It would be well worth uh. Uh, continuing for the sake of just uh improving and providing those opportunities.
Thank you, Supervisor Ryan. Now, other comments from board members on this? Vice Chair Vasquez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I I agree with uh both both of you. I believe that uh. The ordinance isn't isn't done yet. There's a little refinement to do. We we heard that in the feedback from the public. Uh, legal is also telling us that, so you know, we want to make sure that this isn't just something that's on the books, but can't be enforced. We want to make sure that we get it right so that when we do need to enforcement, it's enforced correctly. And so. Uh, I agree, we need to table it. I do want to, um. I really hope that we can, we can get this ordinance right and have the public he- hearing sooner rather than later. But at the same time, sometimes you have to go slow to go fast, so um. Uh, I I agree with the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Vasquez. Supervisor Brigade.
Um, I'm in agreement that we should, you know, uh, continue this. I think that's um, we're gonna have to. We just have to do it right and um make sure that, you know, at the end, you know, we don't um just rush things and. Um, things, it it's going to be something that, you know, we have to go, people have to go by, so. Um, I'm pretty sure, you know, when we had the public hearing, we had a lot of comments that were made and I. I feel that, you know, it um, it was something that I felt that you needed more input from the community and then also, um. That, you know, a revision had to be made at that point in time, so. Or addition, deletion, whatever it may have, wherever it is. But anyway, I just I want to say, I think it's best just to continue this um. Um, this item again. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and uh, we see that our deputy county attorney, Monique Cody, please. Oh, no.
Now I'm unneeded.
Yep, you're good now.
Weren't you supposed to like? You know, do something with your head or something?
I was waiting for vice chair to start scratching his head.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Chair, uh, members of the board. I just wanted to review um procedurally where we are and procedurally what uh the next steps are. Supervisor Ryan, you mentioned sixty days. The sixty day notice applies to uh fees. We already did the sixty day notice for the uh the permit fee, so that permit fee. Oh, you know, when we. Pass a um in ordinance, we meaning you, uh, that that fee is still valid, so but there is a fifteen day notice, so. Because uh based on the public comment and then comments from the chair and other supervisors. There are going to be substantial revisions to the ordinance that was made available for the public hearing and and to the public, so. Um, so tonight, really, your choices are to. Reject, um, adopt or or revise, but. It it seems like uh that you want to reject what uh was originally proposed as an ordinance. Give further direction, and we've heard some direction um from Chair Horstman, and we've heard some direction from the public. Um, so I I think that it would be. Reject, come up with a new draft, but that new draft would need to be uh. Noticed for fifteen days and then we would have a second public hearing, so we're not. Continuing the hearing, we're rejecting this item, we're. You know, do new ordinance that will go to public hearing, so. I think I confused something that's really not that confusing. So if anyone has any questions on what the. Uh, statutory procedures, I I'd be happy to answer those.
And and if I can just make a recommendation, then Monique, make sure this will meet it, and that is, could we entertain a motion? To table the approval of the ordinance and send it back for further further review and amendments. And bring it forward uh for appropriate consideration and further hearing. Would that work?
Well, it it seems that the types of revisions that that I I have heard, uh, it it's going to require. A a new ordinance, so it's it's not revising this ordinance, or it's making enough revision that it's going to trigger. A new public notice and a new hearing, so the motion could either be to, you know, reject what's um in the board packet, reject what was available at the public hearing. Reject and direct staff and county attorney's office to. Come back with a a new ordinance or um. You know, we're continuing to work on it. There there's many ways to approach. I I just don't want to have something that is unclear to the to the public um that.
And and I, and that's why I don't want to see it as a rejection uh of the short term ordinance, but I what I'd like to see it, if it works. Uh, to to uh basically have a motion to not approve the current ordinance and instead. Instead, send it back for further review, discussion and amendments, and then bring it forward as uh it is appropriate. Uh, in the coming uh weeks or months.
Correct, with um an additional public hearing if necessary.
Well, and and quite frankly, I think we need to have a public hearing.
Uh. Yeah, then I would recommend that um make that um part of the motion. I I know we don't have a lot of members of the public um in attendance tonight, although we spoke with quite a few on February twenty eighth. So uh the the minutes would would. Show that we're um.
So.
Continuing the item, directing staff and the county attorney's office to um. Make revisions. Do an additional public notice and then schedule it for an additional public hearing in the future, near futures.
So if we can, if we could just have a motion to not approve the current ordinance. Twenty twenty three zero four. And instead, direct that the short term rental ordinance be sent back to staff and legal counsel. For uh revision and that this revised ordinance would be brought forward to. Uh, the Board of Supervisors uh for further review and uh public hearing as required by law.
As uh stated, Madam Chair, rather than me trying to repeat that, uh, that will, that is my motion.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ryan. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Vice Chair Vasquez. Uh, that we are um not approving the ordinance as set forth and we are sending it back. To legal console and the cities uh and to county staff. Uh, for redrafting, to bring before the board, uh, and uh to bring before the board and a further public hearing as as required by law. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
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 We have unanimous support uh for this to be brought uh sent back and brought back. Uh, and we look forward to looking at this again. We look forward to putting it out to the public and to continue to work with um. Uh, other municipalities and the public and uh. Will bring something forward here in the next weeks or months, uh, and hopefully get this done. And and something that that we can be proud of here and our community can be proud of and understand as well, so. Thank you and our staff that has worked so hard on this. And our legal consul who's worked so hard on it. Uh, and um. And just for my colleagues too, for uh their thoughtful consideration and review of this. Uh, anything else, members of the board, any other comments that you might have? See none? Uh, anything from county manager or from Jay uh Chriselman on this?
Um, no, Madam Chair, uh, staff uh have captured the direction through the motion. And we will proceed accordingly and um. And bring the the revised ordinance back to the board for consideration of future date.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your help on this, everyone, so. Uh, and we don't have anything else on our agenda. I know you're probably all disappointed, but uh. I believe we are now at the end and it's time to adjourn.
I wanted to go out and shovel, you know, I'm not going to be able to keep up with Monique and her running, so I better go shovel.
It's still light out. You have time, Supervisor Ryan.
All right.
I thank you all very much. Really appreciate everybody's help on this, so.
Take care.
Thank you. Good night.